The hour of six o'clock having arrived, I'll call to order the meeting of our common council for Tuesday, December seventeenth, twenty twenty four, clerk. All right, very good, thank you clerk. And now please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for an invocation offered by Alder De Lee.
Good evening. Being that the day after Halloween, it was Christmas a hundred percent in our home due to my girlfriend's love for the holiday season. I felt compelled that my invocation tonight be one that mirrors this time of the year. As we gather here today during the season of peace and goodwill, let us reflect on the spirit of Chris- of the Christmas season. One of hope, kindness and unity. May this time of the year inspire us to serve our community with compassion, understanding and a renewed sense of purpose. Let us remember those among us who are facing hardships or challenges. And strive to uplift one another, strengthening the bonds that connect us as neighbors and fellow citizens. May wisdom guide our decisions this evening and may the work we do together honor the trust placed in us. Let this meeting be a testament to to cooperation. As we seek to build a city where all can thrive in safety, dignity and joy. With gratitude for the opportunity to serve and with hope for a bright and peaceful season for all, Merry Christmas and a very happy new year.
Thanks for sharing those words, having some mic issues here. Um, so with that, we'll move along to approval of the minutes. Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Stevens, any changes? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose nay, the ayes have it, the minutes are approved, approval of the agenda. Motion to approve made by Alder De Lee. Seconded by Alder Presley, any amendments here, Alder Johnson? Uh, Mr. Will Cat?
Uh, motion to amend, move item J after V.
All right, Alder Johnson moves. An amendment, um, to place J after V. And then V is in Victor. That was seconded by Alder Galvin. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose nay, the agenda is amended. Entertain a motion to approve. Motion to approve the agenda as amended made by Alder De Lee, seconded by Alder Eck, any discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose nay, the ayes have it and the agenda has been approved. Uh, report by the mayor. Uh, first Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy Everything. Um, thanks to Alder Eck for planning our little holiday gathering before, uh, the meeting tonight. There was some great participation and, um, so really appreciate that. Also, yes, there was a lot of food brought, so yeah, members of the gallery feel free to to dig in, well said. Um, so thanks again for for organizing and for everybody for contributing to that. Um, couple other items that I I wanted to mention. Um, as some of you know, Ahmad Rivera Wagner was elected to our state assembly down in Madison, so he's going to be representing us. Uh, so a round of applause for Ahmad. But here comes the bad news, it's his last meeting with us, right? So, um, just wanted to extend our appreciation, uh, my personal appreciation obviously. Uh, but also the city's appreciation for your service to this community. Um, you know, we're going to be losing you in this role, but you know, we're going to be gaining a great advocate down in Madison, so good luck and, uh, and thanks for everything. Uh, next, we have a resolution. Uh, to advance or to to essentially support the agreement. That, uh, C Rice, uh, who is here tonight has has come to with our our county administration. Um, this has obviously been a huge city priority, community priority. Um, harbor commission priority for literal decades. Um, certainly, you know, going back to the Schmidt administration, Jayden administration, but according to former mayor Schmidt, even as far back as Romy Dennison, who was the mayor, I think in the late fifties. Early sixties, um, just a monumental opportunity, I think, for all of us, uh, for our community members and and residents. Um, to see this project move forward, to see the opening up of thirty five acres of our near downtown waterfront, uh, for future reuse. Um, that will be to the benefit of of all of Green Bay and Brown County's residents. And in addition to that, enabling, um, port growth and expansion at Polium, uh, with the construction of a new terminal up there. Um, obviously relocating C Rice's operations, but enabling future growth, um, on that parcel for additional port use into the future. So, big vote coming up on on Wednesday tomorrow over at the county board and, um, so of course urging. Um, your support of our resolution tonight, um, and and also advocacy with with our friends on the county board, um, to make sure we get across the finish line on that. Uh, lastly, a very somber note. Um, you know, this has been a difficult year for the city. We've lost some really valuable employees, um, past employees. So Tom Roberts was a former member of our police department who tragically lost his life. Um, Jason Mays from our water utility. Um, you know, just recently had a sudden heart attack within the last couple of months and we lost him. Um, and then just last week, uh, Tyler Pryder from our Green Bay Metro Fire Department, uh, passed away after a three-year battle with with cancer. Um, so, you know, just wanted to expand, ex- express my sincere condolences, um, to Alicia, Tyler's entire family. Um, to all of Tyler's brothers and brothers and sisters within the Green Bay Metro Fire Department who are are mourning him. Um, there is a ceremony, a celebration of life coming up, um, awake and, uh, tomorrow, Wednesday from four to eight P M. And then on Thursday, the funeral services out at Celebration Church, um, on Thursday morning at at ten A M. Um, so again, an extreme loss for us and and for our fire department. Um, we're thinking about Tyler and and his entire family and all all who loved him. And so again, just e- expressing our sincere appreciation and and condolences, um, to his family. So if we could just have a moment of silence. Thank you. Now on to announcements from our council. Alder Eck.
Oh, there we go. Uh, in light of it being, um, almost Christmas time, I just wanted to, um, let a couple of Christmas things that are coming up, Christmas concerts. Wow, keeps going in and out. Okay, um, at the Cup of Joy, uh, this Friday, a sweet acoustics Christmas at seven thirty and then Saturday. Swan Family Christmas at, um, I think it's seven o'clock and they are free admission, you just, they just take a donation, so I just wanted to share that.
Thanks, Alder. Any other announcements? All right, seeing none, we'll move along to appointments. We have one appointment here. Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder De Lee, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. Pose nay, the ayes have it and that appointment has been confirmed. Um, skipping over J on decay ordinances, second reading for adoption. Maybe suspend? Alder Eck makes motion to suspend the rules, take up these items with one roll called vote, seconded by Alder Prophet, discussion here, seeing none, all. Uh, Alder Johnson, I'm sorry, that's suspension. I'm good, okay. Um, all in favor will say aye. Pose nay, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Motion to adopt made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Hankfuss, now Alder Johnson?
On K three and K four.
Right, that will be noted and just for council members, audience members, probably obvious at this point, but we're having some mic issues, so please bear with us a little bit. Um, all in favor, oh, roll call will be required on that, so we will use the board. All right, and those are adopted unanimously, onto the report of the redevelopment authority. Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet. Seconded by Alder Stevens, any discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose nay, the ayes have it, that report has been approved, improvement in services. Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet and seconded by Alder Eck, items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye. Pose nay, the ayes have it, that report has been approved, protection and policy committee. Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Presley, items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye. Pose nay, the ayes have it, that report has been approved, protection and policy committee granting operator licenses. Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet. Seconded by Alder Galvin, any abstentions or names to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose nay, the ayes have it, that report's been approved, report to the finance committee. Motion to approve made by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Hankfuss. All right, Alder Johnson, well, did we, did we approve it already? All in favor of approval will signify by saying aye. Pose nay, the ayes have it, um, items to be held separately is item one, Alder Johnson? Motion to approve made by Alder Johnson and seconded by Alder Galvin. Right, Alder Johnson makes motion to open the floor. Uh, seconded by Alder Galvin, all in favor say aye. Pose nay, the ayes have it, the floor is open and this is the item one on the finance committee agenda. Um, to approve the dissolution of the memorandum of understanding and allocation of a million dollars roughly of ARPA economic impact funds for R D A vacant lands. Is somebody? Daniel Muir in the gallery?
I'm here, good evening. I'm here, good evening. Good evening.
Uh, Mr. Muir, we're not hearing your audio coming through.
Can you hear me now? Good evening. Good evening, city of Green Bay known as thirty nine dash six zero zero five four five eight. I'm a customer of Cass County located at twenty one forty nine Velp Avenue, Green Bay, Wisconsin, five four three.
Mr. Muir, if you could just start over, um, we just started hearing you.
Okay. Good evening. City of Green Bay, known as thirty nine dash six zero zero five four five eight. I'm a customer, Cass County, located at twenty one forty nine Velp Avenue, Green Bay, Wisconsin, five four three zero three. My name is Daniel Muir. This comment is an application to use my exemption in the amount of five hundred thousand. At thirty nine dash six zero zero five four five eight, can adopt it on their resolutions by adoption for the benefit of his customers and my creditors. And appropriated by me on the account nine zero C zero one dash two four zero seven dash zero 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 one seven one, thank you.
Okay. Um, any questions for our guest? All right. Alder Johnson?
Um, Mr. Muir, I I I think, um, members of council are a little confused on, um, perhaps what you're asking. Um, appreciate the the reading of the written statement, could you perhaps summarize, uh, for us what it is that you're looking to do?
It's part of the expenditure.
Uh, okay, and is there something in particular that you are requesting with that expenditure?
Just to apply it.
To be a participant in the program that we are looking to fund?
That's correct.
Okay, um, and so what we're doing tonight is is we'll take a motion here to to fund that program and then I think additional details. Will will come out about that program and how to participate in it. Um, perhaps staff here could could capture your your information and then we can reach out to you when that is available.
Sounds good, lovely, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I believe Mr. Muir submitted his information online, so. Okay. Staff had some of that. Great, um, motion to close the floor. Motion to close the floor has been made by Alder Johnson. Seconded by, um, Mr. Morgan, all in favor will say aye. Pose nay, the ayes have it, floor is closed. I think Alder Johnson had a motion to approve already on the floor, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. Pose nay, the ayes have it and that motion succeeds, onto the park committee. Motion to approve made by Alder De Lee, seconded by Alder Eck, items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye. Pose nay, the ayes have it, that report has been approved, personnel committee. Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder De Lee, items here to be handled separately? Alder Prophet? Okay, very good, Alder Prophet notes an abstention on item two, any other comments? None, all in favor will say aye. Pose nay, the ayes have it, that report has been approved, onto our informational items, there's a building report and a municipal court report. Uh, both for November twenty twenty four included in the packet this evening. Um, next is our committee of the whole for consideration and possible action to approve a resolution celebrating the collaborative effort to relocate C Rice's coal operations. Alder Johnson?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Galvin. Alder Johnson on the motion.
Yeah, thank you, mayor, this is something, uh, that the mayor and I had discussed, uh, as a formal procedure to really demonstrate the city's support. For obviously a very critical vote that is going to happen by the county. Um, you know, I think we'll probably have potential for some amendments, so what I would do is I think that there are some folks here who would want to speak to this. So I'll make a motion to open the floor and then we can reconvene discussion afterwards.
Alder Johnson makes motion to open the floor, seconded by Alder Prophet, all in favor will say aye. All right. Pose nay, the ayes have it, floor is open to interested parties, if you just want to approach the podium and state your name and address for us.
Is this one working?
Yeah.
I think so. Uh, my name is Keith Hasselhoff and my address is six nine three Forest Oaks Trail, North Huntington, Pennsylvania. Appreciate the opportunity to speech, to speak tonight. Good evening, again, my name is Keith Hasselhoff and I serve as the CEO of the C Rice Company. C Rice has been part of this community for more than a century. Our company has done business on the Great Lakes since our founding in eighteen eighty and we have called our Mason Street location here in Green Bay home since nineteen hundred. C Rice has been proud to create jobs in this community for generations. We've also been proud to supply the energy necessary to heat homes and power factories that have helped grow the local economy for the past hundred and twenty four years. The history of our company is closely linked to that of this community and we know our future will be as well. C Rice has been through many different ownership structures. At first, we were owned by a family from Sheboygan, then by a large private company and now by a family out of Latrobe, Pennsylvania. And just recently, we are proud to call Christian Zaid Molder, a Green Bay native, the president of our company. He grew up on the east side, went to East High School, served in the Marines and graduated from U W G B. For many years now, the community has expressed a desire to move the coal piles out of downtown Green Bay and redevelop our riverfront site off Mason Street. We understand and appreciate this goal. And since we were approached by the county and city over two years ago, C Rice has been fully engaged with key stakeholders on this effort, including Mayor Ginrich, county executive Streckenbach and their teams. We were told it would be best for the community if we relocated to the Polium site, so we engaged. But from the start, we made clear we would commit to being part of the project, but we also need to be good stewards of our company and the future of our business here. Ultimately, if the lease terms we negotiated are not approved, C Rice will continue to profitably operate from its Mason Street location. To the extent there are last minute changes to terms of this deal before the board's vote tomorrow, we would consider that a rejection of the agreement we have negotiated in good faith with the county administration over the past year. To be clear, we've offered a range of options to meet the community's request to move the coal piles. When it was announced this summer that the county did not receive the twenty five million dollar federal grant that had sought to complete the full project as originally designed. C Rice offered a design of a smaller footprint at the, at the Polium site. It would allow us to move the coal piles using just the fifteen million dollars the state had granted for the project. For the smaller footprint, C Rice put forth two offers, one similar to the lease that the county has in front of them. And the other one, purchase of the site for three and a half million dollars. The potential sale would provide the county with a one hundred percent return on its investment and generate approximately two point one million dollars for it to use on other projects. While the county administration has declined to pursue this option, we'd still be open to it. The county administration has preferred a lease option, which is the agreement now before them. Today, we have a window of opportunity to achieve some long-held goals. We can join together to leverage the support of state and federal grants which were specifically awarded to achieve the long-held objective of moving the coal piles out of downtown. These resources will not be available forever. With support from the county and the city, C Rice can reimagine and redevelop the Mason Street site, which is an exciting prospect and has the potential for job growth and economic development at this downtown waterfront location. I want to thank the county executive, corp counsel Dave Henry, as well as the mayor and his chief of staff Ahmad Rivera Wagner and their teams for their hard work on this effort over the last years. And I want to thank the board for their consideration tomorrow. I ask you to support this agreement and I'd be happy to enter question, and answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Mr. Hasselhoff, appreciate all the work on this, uh, questions from our council, Alder Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. Um, excuse me. Mr. Hasselhoff, thanks for for coming here. Um, the, uh, your current site, the one that's downtown is is in my district, just to provide some context, so. Uh, obviously want to thank you, you know, for for being a partner, coming to the table, uh, and working with all the the interested parties, I mean, this is complex, it's hard. And, uh, and and we appreciate your willingness to, uh, to engage in a difficult conversations that quite frankly, you you don't have to. And and so it's meaningful to us that that you're willing to do that and to be here, uh, today, all the way from Pennsylvania, you said, right?
Yeah.
So, um, just a couple of questions that I have for you, just to, you know, to help us kind of frame up this this P U D and, uh, obviously wanting to understand. Um, maybe the long-term use of of the property downtown if the county were to approve your lease, uh, as as you discussed. Um. Uh, your company, it's my understanding that you, your company does have e- experience doing mixed-use development in other communities?
The larger parent company, yes.
Okay, and and, um, could you, I guess, wha- what does that mixed-use development typically look like?
Um, so the mixed-use development that we're we're working on one right now is actually more of like a a sports facility.
Okay, um, have you done residential, um, or or office slash commercial use, that kind of thing?
No, we've not done any of that.
Okay, is that something that you would be open to?
Yes.
Okay, and and obviously the city would clearly be a, you know, a very valuable partner in those types of discussions.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, um, and then a- again, it's my understanding that there would be a commitment to, um, I'm going to butcher the numbers, right? But it's ten acres towards Mason, roughly twenty twenty-five acres into the south, uh, that would still be preserved for other light industrial uses, um, that that are relevant to your company operation?
Yeah, from early on in this whole discussion, the the discussion has always been around, you know, we moved the coal piles down to the Polium site. And then the the northern ten acres, we've always been discussing with the city as the possibility for mixed-use development there. And then on the rest of the acreage, we're port operator, so we're going to try to do something there that has port operations at it. Though we understand that obviously more big piles is not what's wanted there, right? So we would look at other operations there, but ultimately, that's what we've been doing for a long time now and we still have about eight acres at that site that are unused. So it's it's not been easy to find additional port operations, but we also don't want to let that sit vacant, right? So, we're going to try our best to do port activity or light industrial, but if that, if that doesn't come to fruition, we've we've got to do something there and we've got to make sure it gets redeveloped because vacant land is not good for anybody.
Right, and so if 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 working with city staff were able to find, um, you know, the right developers, the right users, would you be open to maybe even expanding that ten acres of mixed-use if if the money makes sense?
Ultimately, yeah, I mean, we're we're business, we're going to look at all of our options and and make the right decisions for for us, right?
Yep, okay, and then, um. Obviously, right now, that site is used for bulk storage, with the coal, the intent is to get that coal over to the Polium site. Um, do you have a sense of what that timeframe would look like if the deal is approved? Uh, I, you know, I know you're gonna just sort of spend down what's there, right? It's not an immediate thing, but do you have a sense of how long that might take?
I mean, first thing that would have to happen is deal is approved, then they actually got to go out and, you know, find a contractor to do the work, then they actually have to finish the site. I have no idea really what that timeframe looks like, but as soon as the site's finished, all the permits are placed and we can actually operate our business on that site. We typically keep about a year to a year and a half of coal supply at Mason Street, so. Once we get that site done, all new coal comes into that site and then we draw that down over time. Um, so year, year and a half after the site is finished.
Okay.
Rough timeframe.
Yeah, and a lot of the, you know, when I, when I talk to other folks, a lot of times they say, you know, five years is probably, you know, minimally what we should expect, but that seems to correlate at least with what you're suggesting there. Understanding it just depends how long it takes them to build out, right?
Yeah.
Okay, um, and then as as far as like future use, particularly with the the light industrial, uh, part of that site. Um, would you cease or terminate, uh, outdoor storage of bulk commodities?
It's something that we've talked about and we understand that that's kind of the whole intent of this project.
Okay, uh, is that something that that? You know, because obviously the, um, I think that's like, to your point, a really important piece of this and perhaps something that at least in full transparency, some of the county board members that I've spoken to, it's kind of a piece that they're hung up on a little bit. Um, obviously, I think if there's a a way for us to have that commitment, I think that would be go a long way to helping get this deal done.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think everybody knows from the beginning, like, if we're moving the coal piles to Polium, it doesn't make any sense to bring in another bulk commodity down there.
Right, okay, thank you. Um, and then. And then. When you think about, and and this will probably concern us a lot less in in more of the county, but when you think about the future of coal. Everybody speculates, right, that coal's a dwindling commodity, but I would presume that if that happens, then you would just replace it with. A different commodity that that you would ship.
Yeah, and that's one thing too, that I guess a lot of people don't really understand is coal's about a third of our business, right? So, we actually are into other commodities, all of our other companies that are parent company are into different commodities as well. We personally think that coal will be around for the foreseeable future. And the customers that we have right now have no intention of going away from coal anytime soon based off your discussions with them, so. Kind of the inventory we have now, I don't think it will go anywhere for a while, but. Of course, yeah, I mean, we're vacant land, right? If the coal goes away, vacant land, we gotta find something to do with it. But bulk commodity movement is largely based upon the manufacturing around that area. So, as manufacturing grows here, you probably need more bulk commodities and we can go after different products.
Okay, great, and then. You know, we talked a little bit, you know, from a zoning perspective, I think. You know, the city obviously would want to to rezone. Will have to actually in order to allow the mixed use and 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 then the continued light industrial. You know, it seemed to me, obviously, a a planned unit development or PUD would probably make the most sense, right, where both parties can mutually agree. To the uses that would occur on that site. Is that something that you would be willing to to engage in that discussion?
We would be willing to engage. I still have a lot of learning on that side of things to like commit to anything though, so. Definitely, and obviously, again, if we have to rezone to do the mixed-use development, I think that's something on the table.
Sure, okay. And then. You know, I just kind of real quickly wanted to. I think, you know, this is probably many years ago, there there was discussion or talk that. The county was going to purchase the polium plant site, the city would purchase the the downtown site. Is there any interest on your part? To to sell the property that's downtown?
There's no interest to sell.
Okay, and and I can appreciate that and I understand why. I just, you know, wouldn't be doing my diligence if I didn't.
Yeah, absolutely understood.
Okay, and so just two more things. One is, I see one of our Brown County supervisors is here. I do want to acknowledge Supervisor LaFave. Who actually used to be a member of this body, and and Supervisor LaFave would certainly urge you and your colleagues. To get this done. This is something that has been out here for a long time and I appreciate you being here tonight. And then, you know, and I appreciate the comments, you know, it's it's been a year you've been negotiating and. In in the deal that was put in front of the county is something that that you've agreed to and obviously. Boy, negotiating by committee is really difficult. And and the only thing that I would not only urge you, but obviously I've urged county board supervisors as well. Right, to to just be open-minded about changes that might be necessary to ultimately get the deal done and. While understanding you're not gonna do anything that is in the best interest of your business, I'm not asking that, right, but just. Keeping an open line of communication, obviously, to, I think the community would greatly appreciate that from both entities as you continue to negotiate the final terms. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
And if you weren't surprised at that, sorry, yeah.
Uh, I mean, on on that item, I mean, we, like you said, we've been doing this for about a year now, right? And we started off owning the entire site, and then after that. It was the entire site for a hundred years, and then it was a portion of the site for a hundred years, and then it was a portion of the site for seventy-five years. And then it was a portion of the site for ninety thousand dollars for seventy-five years with two and a half percent rate increases. And then it was a portion of the site for ninety-five years with two and a half percent increases, and now we're gonna do a market lead. So we've we've compromised a lot over the last ten months. And we just assumed the entire time that everybody on the county board and everybody was, you know, involved there. And we're we're kind of the point now where we're asking ourselves, like, this is really. Kind of the bottom bottom line for us, right? So we we've compromised a lot over the last year and and then even. I mean, there's a lot of business owners, I think, in this room right now, but even, that's not how you negotiate, right? Like, last-minute changes is is tough for someone, put us on the spot right then and there, like, we. We had an agreement two weeks ago, even for a hundred years, and then last week they came back and said, can you can you shorten it? Okay, we'll go to seventy-five years, but come on, like, we gotta get this over the finish line at this point in time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our guests from council members? Alder Galvin.
Thank you, your honor. Has your company looked at? With this move that happens, how it's gonna impact your company? I mean, is it gonna increase your ability to bring more products or commodities into the area?
Think kind of spoke that a little bit earlier, right? We, I think that we've been we've been trying to do that, right? We have eight acres at Mason Street right now. We've been trying to grow the business. That's something we constantly do. It's gonna be really based off of the manufacturing and the need for the area. Kind of our view is probably not a whole lot more need for bulk commodities at this point in time. But if of other manufacturing comes in, then there's the possibility to to grow and do different commodities. Now, we have some some things we're working on right now that might grow a couple of new products, but they're not huge deals by any means, so.
Okay, and I mean, I'm intimately familiar with your coal fields having run around there as a young man fifty years ago. But my mother and father weren't very happy about that. But. When you talk about, when I talk about, it does, your being at the mouth of the river, does that make it easier for you to bring commodities in and out?
Not really, no, I mean, there's there's maybe another foot or two of draft, but other than that, there's not a real big difference. When you look at, when you look at vessel rates, like what it costs, the the difference between going to the mouth of the river versus going down the Mason Street. Be a minimal impact on any cost to the operation.
Okay, and will moving increase any amount of jobs that are currently being employed at your company or?
I would say that that goes to the redevelopment of Mason Street, right? So, us moving down there would allow us to reimagine and redevelop Mason Street, and that will bring job growth. And that's still largely to us, we've gotta do some due diligence and figure out what makes sense there.
Does that seem like a real possibility if you're able to move?
Yeah, we're gonna, again, we're gonna redevelop that site into something. We're not gonna let it sit vacant. I mean, that's a, it's a, it's a, it's a good piece of land. And there's something that will definitely end up there.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks so much again for all the work and for being here tonight.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Right, entertaining motion to close the floor. Motion to close floor made by Alder Eck, seconded by Alder Hinkfuss. All in favor will say aye. Opposed nay? The ayes have it. Floor is closed. Alder Johnson?
And again, thanks, obviously, to our guests here. They traveled a long ways, I think, to. And to me, that demonstrates a a really strong commitment to to make this happen for our community. For this part of our county that is has really been talked about, as the mayor said, for for many decades and generations. Before you is a resolution, as many of you know. Resolutions are the the formal process by which we communicate with other governmental bodies to demonstrate our commitment and support. For certain actions and and we really wanted to secure this body's. Obviously favorable vote that we could then transfer this message over to our county board to to show. How important we think that this is to our community. I'd encourage all of you to reach out to your county board supervisors. To to vocalize your support for this. If you have relationships with others, really make it know. How important this vote is, how crucial and critical it is to the future of our community. You know, I think there's, I I think. While Mister Hasselhoff here didn't necessarily explicitly say it, obviously, there's been a lot of work and effort that has gone into this negotiation, and I think that process continues. And folks that perhaps want to see. You know, a deal that that looks a little differently, and unfortunately, we've come to the eleventh hour here, and so we have to. Our county board has to make some really difficult decisions about what's more important here. The the, I mean, the opportunity to get this done using thirty million dollars of state and federal money that's intended and and already authorized and allocated for port expansion. Or are we going to let this opportunity slip through our fingertips, really? The only real opportunity we've had to do this in that entire time that this has been talked about. It really hinges on one vote, and and we really need this body's support, working with your county board members to talk about that. One thing, as I mentioned, that. You know, as we've talked with, as as I've talked, I guess, with certain county board members, there's, you know, some of them have different concerns and needs and wants in different areas. And I I I hope that leadership can kind of bring them together. It's important that we all understand that. Because of their body's rules, and this is being a financial decision outside of the budget, it does require a two-thirds vote. So we need eighteen members of county board to support this, and that's that's hard. And and I hope that we can encourage them to see the wisdom and the vision of of what this site could look like. Long-term and into the future. This is about the kind of community we want to be, not the kind of community we were a hundred years ago when this use was established. And, you know, you think about the 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 dense residential development that has occurred in that area. It's just different, right? And and this belongs in an area where there are other industrial uses. And if you go to the mouth of the river where the polium plant site sits right now on the west side, there's nothing but industrial use out there. This makes all the sense in the world. The funding is there to build out the terminal, and there's still. The ability for the county to add a second terminal if they can continue to raise the funding that that closes that gap. So, this deal could actually expand their port operations, and that's kind of the big message that I've really tried to hit home with a lot of folks is. This isn't necessarily about moving coal piles, it's about port expansion. And it gives the county a lot of advantages and the ability to increase the amount of tonnage that that comes through our community. This can be a win-win, but more importantly, because this deal was that the county would take ownership of that site. The city would would manage the downtown site and make sure that that's developed appropriately. This is about honor. And this is about recognizing that we each had a role to play in this, and we knew that. We we knew that neither one of us could assume both responsibilities, and so I really hope that the county sees as the opportunity to do something. I I just don't want anyone to ever be remembered for something they didn't do. I think this is a real opportunity for them to be known for something that they did do. That will be remembered for decades. There is one modification, however, I would like to make to the resolution, so I would offer this as an amendment, could probably be. Placed anywhere within the wherethes, and this is really intended to maybe pacify. Couple of county board supervisors and and their concerns around the future use of that site. So I would make a motion to amend to add, whereas Sea Rice publicly acknowledged at the City of Green Bay's. December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four common council meeting, that future uses will not include bulk commodity storage. And a willingness to negotiate a PUD with terms mutually agreeable to both parties.
Second for that motion? Seconded by Alder DeLee, made by Alder Johnson. Any further comments or discussion on on that motion, that amendment? Being done, all in favor will say aye. Opposed nay? The ayes have it. The resolution is amended. And then we'll wait for the vote once we get to resolutions.
Do it as committee of the whole.
Make a motion as.
I don't know if anybody else wants to speak.
Any other comments from our Alders? Alder Weary, go ahead.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. And thank you President Johnson for putting this together. It's so important.
I want to give the mayor credit.
Well, that was next. And that was next. Thank you Mayor Ginrich for and your staff for working on this. I was elected two thousand and two, and this was discussed way back then, and I've experienced firsthand the peaks and the valleys of we're almost there. I think we've got something. No, it's not, so went went in the back burner for years, and then kind of reignited again, and then went in the back burner. Something people talk about and they've grown grown so used to being disappointed that they just think it'll never get done. But it's more than just moving the coal piles, as as you stated, it's about expanding our port and redeveloping downtown. And it sounds like we have a willing helper here to have a better vision of what we want, so. I know I've been on the phone and will be on the phone with the people who are the supervisors from my district, Alder Supervisor Vanderlees, and Evans, and. Borschard, so I I hope we get unanimous support from our our people here in the city, and I hope the council does as well. I will ask for a board vote on this so we can show our support, I hope. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin?
Mayor, grew up down by the river, until just recently, my constituency ran right up to the river. The complaints I had for years about coal dust and the stories you read about back in the fifties with the the coal residue coming out of chimneys and that. The 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 fun people have made up the coal piles, you know, the the guy skiing down the hill. On a pile of coal that was, you know, spread throughout the city. But like you said, Alder Weary, this goes beyond just the coal piles. This goes, this is an opportunity. It's an opportunity for Green Bay and Brown County to grow. Grow jobs, grow a tax base, and grow opportunities. Listening to the gentleman representing the company, his company sounds like they're committed to doing the same thing. And at the same time, I appreciate that they want to make sure that their company stays viable. And I just hope that in the negotiation, the other side's willing to listen to what they're asking for. And try to find someplace in the middle where they can meet and satisfy everybody, but this is an opportunity. That we're not gonna see again for a very, very long time. As long as I live, I'll bet. If we miss this, we're gonna be stuck with it for a long time. And we've been waiting for an opportu- I can't think of an opportunity in the last twenty or thirty years that equals what this potentially has. For not just, and this is not just about Green Bay, this is about Brown County. This is actually about northeast Wisconsin and what it can do for this area. And I think people have to look beyond their little areas that they're in control of and look at the big picture. And think, what is this gonna mean for us fifty years down the road, seventy-five? What does it mean for our children and our children's children? So, I hope people are listening, and I have already called my Brown County rep. And I plan on calling a few others. Thank you.
Any other comments? Alder Johnson makes a motion to approve that item as amended, seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor will say aye. Yeah.
Do you want to do it on the resolution?
We'll do it.
This is the agenda item.
Yeah, we'll do a roll call on the resolution for sure. All in favor will say aye. Opposed nay? The ayes have it. And that item from committee of the whole was approved. Next, we are on to resolutions. Yes, we will do that. That's a great idea. Alder Prophet makes a motion to suspend the rules for items one through three, take them up with one roll call vote. Is there a second for that? Seconded by Alder Hinkfuss. All in favor will say aye. Opposed nay? The ayes have it. The rules are suspended. Motion to adopt items one through three made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder DeLee, and we will use the board. And those resolutions are adopted unanimously onto resolution four. Alder Prophet makes a motion to approve as amended from our actions in T one, seconded by Alder Johnson, and even final discussion. Seeing none, we will use the board. Unanimous adoption on that resolution. As others have said, you know, I'll certainly be doing everything I can in the next twenty-four hours. To relay the message that's been shown here tonight at our common council and and would ask all of you to do the same. So thanks so much for your deliberation on that and your support of this initiative. With that, ordinance is first reading. Motion to suspend the rules made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Eck. All in favor will say aye. Opposed nay? The ayes have it. The rules are suspended. Motion to advance made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder DeLee. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed nay? The ayes have it. Those ordinances are advanced to a second and final reading. Now, because of the. Agenda being amended amended, we are back to item J, which is a quasi-judicial hearing. On revocation of massage establishment license granted to Luck Waxy Therapy LLC at nine eight nine West Mason Street. Attorney Bungert.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. To refresh everyone's memory, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. We did just go through the conflicts portion of. Of our hearing process, so at that point, nobody did have any conflicts to disclose. I just wanted to confirm that that has not changed for any of our council members. So, to to confirm that again, that you do not have any interest or conflict in this matter. And that you haven't received any communication from any person or party about this matter. Seeing none, okay, we can proceed further. So, the respondent, Luck Waxy LLC, was served with a summons of complaint. They did appear in person at our last meeting, and I believe the respondent is present. And we also do have a. Um, and we also do have a, um, an interpreter for our respondent, um, to aid in, in tonight's proceedings as well. Um, so the procedure, uh, for tonight will be as follows. Uh, a decision will be made based upon the testimony and the Green Bay municipal code. At this time, the petitioner's complaint, uh, which is the city's complaint, has been made part of the record, um, and is in your packets and will be represented or presented, I'm sorry, by Assistant City Attorney Rachel Mays on behalf of the city. The respondent has not provided any evidence ahead of today's proceedings, but will be allowed to, um, provide evidence and testimony, um, under oath this evening. The council will hear from both parties, uh, before issuing its decision on the matter. Both sides will have ten minutes to present their testimony and evidence, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttals. Uh, beginning with attorney Mays for the city, followed by the respondent. And each speaker will be sworn in before speaking. Uh, the evidence needs to be credible, relevant, and probative. Throughout the process, the members of council may ask questions of any speaker. Speakers are reminded to answer the questions asked and not engage in debate with the council. As a reminder, the council members may not testify or present their opinions or statements. Following the arguments, the council will deliberate and make motions as appropriate. Uh, the council can either announce its decision tonight or take the matter under advisement and have a decision at the next council meeting. Uh, the council will make findings of fact and conclusions of law based upon the record before it. Once those are adopted by council, copies of the same will be provided to, uh, to the parties. So before getting to the arguments, um, we, I, I do want to just verify whether we do have an attorney or counsel present for, um, for representing the respondent or whether the respondent will proceed representing themselves.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. You know, I tried to, um, hire a lawyer because this, the lawyer is saying this case no one need to come to for talking about. So I have in trouble in the head, so can help me, I answer all the questions and this girl answer the questions.
So I'm, I'm her personal interpreter. My name is Lindsay, Lindsay Roke. Okay, um, yes, so I will be helping these two ladies tonight as well. Sure. I, I came here prior, not knowing that you guys have an interpreter already, so.
Right, yeah, yes, thank you. No, so we will, we'll need to proceed with the interpreter that we secured um, for, for purposes of, of fairness, um, and, um, to ensure that the record is appropriate. So, um, if, if you're proceeding with yourselves, um, we can, I just wanted to verify how we're going about this because that may, it may change how, how we're moving forward, okay? Um, so at this point, I think we can proceed with attorney Mays presenting first, and then after she presents, we'll be able to have the respondents, um, uh, present their, their testimony and their evidence.
Um, you want to start with my name and address as well?
Actually, we're gonna, we're gonna start with, uh, the Assistant City Attorney.
Okay.
So the city will present first, and then you'll have ten minutes to present.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So we can proceed with attorney Mays.
Yes. Yes.
Attorney Mays, before moving forward, will you have any additional witnesses, um, that you'll be presenting as part of your case in chief?
Uh, no, I will not be presenting witness testimony.
Okay. All right, you may begin.
All right, good evening, council. Um, I wish I would have thought to wear a festive sweater tonight. Join the party. Um, all right, so, uh, we're, we're here tonight, um, to talk about, uh, Tulip Spa at nine eighty-nine West Mason Street. Um, the parcel is owned and operated, well, it's owned by, uh, Laura Garden LLC. Um, with a primary agent of that LLC being, uh, Zi Phillyon. On July thirtieth of this year, um, this council granted a massage establishment license to Luck Weighji LLC, or, I'm sorry, Luck Weighji Therapy LLC. This LLC doesn't exist on the D F I website. Very similar, Luck Wenji does exist with a primary place of operations at nine eighty-nine Mason Street. So this LLC is registered with the D F I. This LLC has Wei Wen Zhu as its primary agent. So the license that was granted was for an entity that doesn't exist on the D F I website. Now, if that was the only issue, was the difference between an N or an I, I probably wouldn't be standing here in front of you tonight. Um, looking at, uh, the application, which I did attach, um, as exhibit one in, uh, last month's, um, agenda, uh, I think it's also been provided for, uh, or last meeting's agenda. I think it has been provided again, um, on, uh, this meeting's agenda. That shows the application that was submitted by Luck Weighji LLC. And, um, as a matter of, uh, compliance checks on September sixth of this year, uh, inspections along with, um, the Green Bay Police Department um, went through and did compliance checks at, uh, massage establishments throughout the city. Uh, during the September sixth conversation at, uh, Tulip Spa, uh, there were some contradictions, um, to the application that was supplied for, for that location that came to light. Um, during that inspection, there was no distinction between two businesses operating. Um, so Tulip Spa continues to operate, run by Zi Phillyon. There's no indication of a separate business being run by Luck Weighji or Luck Wenji LLC. It appears to be one operation. The site plan in the application document shows the entire interior of the building um, as being the area that Luck Weighji LLC, uh, was operating its massage establishment. So there's no distinction there between, um, I mean, with, with a massage establishment license, you could potentially have multiple businesses operating out of the same building. Kind of like with a hair salon, you could have different bays, you could have different chairs. Um, you could potentially have multiple businesses operating, um, in the same space. But there's no distinction. There's no signage, there's no differentiation on the site plan. Um, so it all appears to be one operation. During the conversation, um, officer, Community Police Officer, um, Camera Allen, uh, discussed with Zi Phillyon and Wei Wen Zhu was present in the room. Um, and Zi Phillyon acknowledged that she filled out the application to help her friend Wei Wen Zhu. On that application contained the contact information for Zi Phillyon. Her phone number. Her email address. Her proof of insurance. So the application was for Wei Wen Zhu, but Zi Phillyon's information is what was contained in the application. Zi Phillyon during that conversation acknowledged that she still owns and is running Tulip Spa. She had not sold the business to her friend. In fact, there was discussion about potentially selling. So they just got the massage establishment license under Wei Wen's name. But the massage establishment license is not transferable. You can't transfer it between locations. You can't transfer it between business owners. Um, if a new business wants to get an application submitted, they have to do that individually. Uh, other inaccurate information, uh, on the application, um, includes so besides the name of the LLC, um, being mistyped, uh, it also includes uh, that the applicant is not a corporation. This was an LLC that was applying. That stands for limited liability corporation. Um, selecting that the applicant is an LLC, is a corporation, would prompt the applicant to fill out additional questions. There would be additional information. Who are the agents of the corporation? Who is the primary agent? Where is the place of business? Uh, those types of questions would, would populate at that point. Uh, using the non-owner or the non, uh, Zi Phillyon is running the business, and by not including her as the applicant, um, there's another question on the application that says, um, have you, um, do you have any judgments against you for massage related violations? And Zi Phillyon has ten judgments against her for, uh, massage establishment related violations through the Green Bay Municipal Court. I attached that as exhibit two in your packets. So the, the, the grounds for the revocation of this massage establishment license is whether the applicant submitted an application with information knowing it to be false, fraudulent, or intentionally deceptive. Those are the grounds that I'm asking you to revoke this license here tonight. Um, if this was one typo, I wouldn't be standing in front of you. Um, but using someone who doesn't own the business isn't running the operations, and now two council meetings in a row, when this item was called, who came up to the podium to represent this massage establishment? It was Zi Phillyon. It was not Wei Wen Zhu. So when you look at all of the different inaccurate information, misinformation, I, I don't know how you come to a conclusion that this was not intentionally deceptive. At the end of the application, the applicant certifies that the information contained herein is truthful and accurate to the best of their knowledge, that they are submitting accurate information. That was not the case here. Um, so beyond the fact that this massage establishment license was granted to an entity that doesn't exist, I think that in and of itself could be revocable. But when you throw the misinformation, the inaccuracies, and what very much looks like a straw man, um, applicant applying for this license and being granted this license, uh, I would seriously, um, or sincerely request that this council revokes the massage establishment license granted to Luck Weighji LLC, uh, for the massage establishment at nine eighty-nine West Mason Street. Um, I do have the body camera footage, um, from the September ninth, or Sept- September sixth, um, compliance check. Um, it's about fifteen minutes of footage if council does want that played. Um, I reviewed it a number of times, so I can also, um, answer any questions that you may have about that footage. Um, if, if you want me to play that, I, I do have it available, um, if that's what council desires. But, um, those are the bases, um, for which I'm requesting the revocation of this massage establishment license.
At this point, council may ask questions, um, if, um, any.
Alder Eck?
Okay, um, and I would be interested in seeing some of it, um, but I'm wondering, are you able to recap what you would like us to see in the video?
So I, I, I hit some of the highlights with my, with my presentation. Um, so during the conversation, uh, Zi Phillyon does admit to, um, Officer Allen that uh, she filled out the application for Luck Weighji LLC. That her friend, um, doesn't speak English very well, so she helped her friend fill out the application. Uh, that doesn't answer why Laura Garden LLC's proof of insurance was submitted. Um, or why Zi Phillyon's contact information was provided. And even after this compliance check back on September sixth, there have been no modifications, um, to the paperwork at the clerk's office. There have been no corrections to the application. Um, so there have been no efforts to correct the record, so to speak. Um, during that conversation, um, Officer Allen, um, does go back and forth explaining that there are apparent, what appear to be two businesses operating in the same space. One has a massage establishment license, one does not. Luck Weighji LLC has a massage establishment license. Tulip Spa or Laura Garden LLC does not. Um, there was discussion about, um, is either, uh, Wei Wen Zhu or Zi Phillyon an employee of the other one? Um, the clear responses are that Wei Wen Zhu is not an employee of Tulip Spa. Zi Phillyon is not an employee of Luck Weighji LLC. Um, so it does appear that there are two, or what are intended to be two different business operations, and Tulip Spa had not been sold to Wei Wen Zhu at that time. Um, and this was months after the massage establishment license had been granted by council. So it was discussion of what's going on, who filled out what information, is the information accurate? Um, and it's, it's fifteen minutes of, um, Officer Allen and Zi Phillyon having that exchange. Wei Wen Zhu is present, but she doesn't say anything during the fifteen minute conversation.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then, um, I'm noticing, so the, there's a list of, um, citations and inspection violations, uh, and I think in the packet, the last one is May twenty-third of twenty twenty-three. Um, have there been more since then?
Uh, it does appear that there is, uh, pending, um, citation that is active in the municipal court. Um, it has not had an initial appearance yet, so I don't know the details of that violation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alder Johnson? Thank you, Attorney Mays. Um, I, you know, I'm looking at, uh, you know, and I get why you're bringing up the, uh, you know, the, the, the spelling errors, the corporation thing. Um, I think for me though, like I'm more concerned about the ownership, of course, and then, and then ultimately the, the citations and uh, one thing I don't think gets at least, uh, terribly clear to me, violation of housing code. Can you tell us what that is?
Yeah, so when there is a zoning violation, uh, use violation, um, that is typically cited by the inspections department. So, um, situations where someone is sleeping in a commercial space. Um, I can think of, uh, one of the fact patterns in particular. Uh, Zi Phillyon had, um, run home allegedly to get breakfast. She had a friend in from out of, out of town, um, who had reportedly been at the casino overnight and came over to Tulip Spa and took a nap. And while the business was open with no other employees on site, um, there was inspection came in and there was a non-employee, non-licensed therapist sleeping in a room that was set up as living quarters, not as a massage room.
So broadly speaking, though, the, the violation of the housing code would be something along those lines, basically. You know, you have something that's in commercial use, it's a non-commercial use. Okay, um, the, uh, uh, and it, and it appears at least all of these citations have been paid?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
And then I see, you know, I, way down, right, twenty sixteen violation of zoning code. Is that basically the same thing as the housing code?
Yes.
Okay, um, is there, you know, it seems odd to me that somebody could have this many uh, violations of operating without a license. Uh, is that you know, really tied back to state law? Is that, you know, really tied back to state law prior to the enactment of our local ordinance? Or like, I mean, at what point does this kind of, you know, tip into a category where, you know, we would file an injunction or we would, it falls into almost like a criminal case, right? So, I'm just trying to understand, like broadly speaking, right? Can somebody just keep doing this and keep getting citations, keep paying them? And then the cycle just keeps going and going and going, or is there another mechanism to address this?
Yes, it can continuously happen. That's one of the reasons why it was important to get a massage establishment license to regulate the business operations, so that it wasn't just looking at whether there was a licensed therapist on premises. And that was pretty much the extent of the massage or body work that was happening. There are other steps that can be taken. Referrals can be made to Department of Safety and Professional Services regarding licenses for individual therapists. Zyphillian's license was suspended for a while. To the best of my knowledge, it's reinstated at this time. But there are other state consequences that are a potential. But one of the purposes of the massage establishment license was to gather information, know who's running the businesses, so that we can catch some of these red flags rather than having an establishment operational for six to nine months before we are aware that the same people are repeatedly offending and have a track record of offenses rather than having information in an application that has been verified or that has been certified by the applicant as being true and accurate.
And when somebody is given a citation for a violation, particularly now that we do have that permit requirement, are they given directions on how to be in compliance? I mean, I'm sure one could presume that that's inherent in the application, but when we give somebody a citation and somebody pays it, is there any additional education, you know, with that organization to make sure that this doesn't, that this isn't a repeated pattern?
I'm not sure what additional conversation. To the best of my knowledge, there's no, like, educational programming or literature that's being handed out at the clerk's office. If there's a violation, certainly during the court process, if there's a contested citation, I'm explaining what the allegation is as part of my prosecution of the citation. This is the rule. This is the evidence I have that you violated that rule, and we have that discussion.
So, they are told at that time that they need to get a license?
Correct.
Okay. And that's really what I was looking for. Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Prophet?
I know this is a new ordinance, so a lot of us are learning, but it's my understanding, and if you could just correct me if I'm wrong, multiple LLCs could be operating and performing massage at the same address, but they would need to do their own application, right? So, say if there's multiple LLCs, like it seems like there are operating here, both of them should have gotten the massage establishment, even though it's the license, even though it's the same address. Is that correct?
That's correct. Additionally, the site plan for each application would distinguish where each business is operating. There would be signage that's required by our zoning code about having each business having signage on the building exterior, those types of things. So, yes, there would be a distinction and each location. So, even if you had a corporate massage entity that wanted to open up ten locations in the city, each location would have to have its own massage establishment license. Each owner of a business would have to have a massage establishment license. They're not transferable between people. They're not transferable from location to location. So, that's how the ordinance is set up.
Thank you.
Alder Gavlin, and then Alder Hutchison.
Alder Prophet got me thinking. You can't have an LLC at the same address, occupying the same rooms or area?
So, the site plan would have to differentiate which LLC is operating where. I don't think that the ordinance would allow for overlapping of spaces. But that's something that, I mean, the ordinance is new. I haven't had that fact pattern or that question posed to me before. But I think that the spirit of the ordinance would require that the spaces be distinct and specified, so that if there was a compliance check, inspection to know whose space they're working, they're inspecting, whether, you know, which business is responsible for any non-compliance, which is why a site plan is required.
So, they couldn't even do it where one LLC operates Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and the other one operates Thursday, Friday?
I mean, if that's specified in the application, I think that that could be a potential. But having the shared spaces, I think more what I would expect to see is that room one and two are Luck Weijie LLC and three and four are Laura Garden LLC or Tulip Spa, or that they would have distinct spaces.
Right. If Zyphillian was to apply for a massage establishment with this record, would you recommend denial or would you recommend approval if if the LLC checked out and if the site plan checked out?
That's not a decision for me to make. The licensing is a decision for all of you to make. So, it would go through the same process in front of committee, recommendation from committee. We'd hear from, you know, what the nature of the violations were, if that's what was inquired. But I do think that having ten massage establishment-related violations is definitely a red flag if someone were to apply with that kind of history.
Well, we do get recommendations, say, from the PD on liquor license.
Yep.
And they recommend denial. So, would the city recommend denial based on this or?
I can't speak to a hypothetical application, but I think that this is, that these are violations that substantially relate to the type of business that this is. So, I think that they're very relevant information that show disregard for the rules as they exist, either a disregard, a misunderstanding, carelessness. I mean, however you want to frame it, it shows that there's a repeat history of violation.
If another person was applying for the license, they had the LLC, the property was in their name, but Zyphillian, do they have to list employees, other massage therapists that worked there?
Yes, employee logs are required under the ordinance, which is why this application seems either deceptive or at least false or inaccurate. The agents of the LLC do need to be listed. Employee logs do need to be maintained. And during this conversation, during this compliance check back in September, which prompted me to draft the complaint, it was clear that Weiwenzhu was not an employee of Zyphillian. Zyphillian was not an employee of Weiwenzhu.
If Zyphillian was an employee of that other person, you would still have the same concerns?
I would, but at least then it would be disclosed, and that's something that could be considered by the committee when the application comes through. It was not disclosed, which is why it leads me to believe that this was intentionally deceptive.
All right. So, is this something like with gun sales? You have straw sales where someone buys a gun under their name, but then sells it to a person who cannot possibly buy that gun?
Well, I mean, the straw man theory can be applied in a lot of different contexts. So, I'm not going to pretend that a massage establishment license has, you know, the same rules or requirements as a gun purchase. That they're apples and oranges. But yes, it's using, it's using someone who doesn't own the business to apply for a permit or a license who's not in charge of operations, who doesn't own the building, doesn't own the business, and they're getting the massage establishment license, but there's no distinction here. It's still one operation that is continuing to run as it had before the application, after the application, after non-compliance had been pointed out. There have been no changes or modifications to this application since September sixth, since the complaint was served on them, since counsel two weeks ago, when I explained, these are the bases for, I told Zyphillian, these are the bases that I'm looking at the revocation. This information is inaccurate. This information is inaccurate. So, even if there are promises or assurances that, you know, we'll correct this information, that hasn't happened to date. And there have been several different points in time where notice of the inaccuracies have been pointed out.
All right. So, your opinion is this is, they were purposely deceitful in filling out these applications as to how they were going to run this business?
I do believe that, which is why, those are the grounds that I'm basing this revocation on, was that they submitted the application knowing it to be false, fraudulent, or intentionally deceptive.
And you think it was to cover up for the past criminal conduct of Zyphillian?
Not criminal, but yeah. They're municipal violations, but yes, a disregard, lack of understanding of the rules and regulations and repeat violations with massage establishment-related violations.
All right. Thank you.
Alder Hutchison?
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Mays, for your work in this regard. One thing, and we're learning, this is a new process. I mean, we're bumping into this in our Protection and Policy Committee. We have to go over things and, you know, figure things out, you know, as we go. But one thing is clear, the application, the application cannot contain any falsehoods. Okay? That's clear, absolutely clear. And to break this down so I can understand, item seven in our complaint has two very clear things. One, that the business is not on the LLC list. It's not on the LLC list. So, that is one problem that was filled in on the application. And then the insurance wasn't applicable to that business. That's two things that were not correct on the application. This is simply the application. And I stress this in the committee, the application has to be as accurate as possible. Because if that's not accurate, what are we basing our decision on? So, I'm breaking this down into those two basic things. The other things are things of concern, but until those two things get answered, I don't see any way forward in this thing. I mean, that's just my opinion at this point in time. I haven't heard the other side yet. But that's clear, and I think you made it clear. So, thank you.
Thank you. And from a staff perspective, we are refining and honing the application to make it as user-friendly and accurate as possible. So, we've had ongoing discussions between myself, the clerk's office, the police department to make sure that this is a user-friendly document and try to avoid any challenges that an applicant may face while still gathering the information that we need.
Any other questions? Alder Eck for a second time.
Is, can I make a request to watch some of the video? We're ready for that?
I can enter that into evidence and Attorney Mays can play that.
Trying to figure out why the volume's not working. IT, any help here? Volume up here, volume's off.
Did you do the share audio and video on the share settings?
That might be it.
Yeah, unshare.
Hello.
Hi.
How are you? Hello. I haven't seen you in a while.
Yeah, you look good.
Oh, thank you. You as well. Your customers here? Just the one customer? Okay, customers in the other rooms? Okay. So, we're just doing a compliance check. Inspection has to follow up on.
Was it the sign that you had on the door when I came the other day?
What was that sign?
The sign with the hours and the name that I had you post on the door. It was green.
In the hand?
Yeah, you had it.
A whistle?
Yeah, you can put it back.
Oh, okay, ma'am.
Yeah.
Are you looking at your ID for us?
Yeah, yeah, me too.
That's one, one.
Is it one one? Okay. All right. She has one? Okay. So, okay, so I saw that the license is under a new business name.
New business name?
Well, so that she has, she has the, that she has a license under this business, right? Yeah, and that's you, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then this is your business? And this is your business, right? That's her business. So, are you employed by her then?
You can, I mean, I want to, she want to rent it for here, so I want to just let her, I help her some.
You help her?
Yeah, some, yeah. Because I want to, I want to rent this building for her. I wanted to rent it for her.
Okay.
So, that's why I changed her name.
So, then Tulip Spa no longer exists?
No, it's still, yes, yeah.
So, why don't you have a license for the city? Why don't you have a license for Tulip Spa? So, she has a license, but you also need to have a license.
Oh, yeah. She said she wanted to buy my business. I just want, I just want to keep renting, then we see how works, see if I can sell for her.
Thank you.
Okay, but she's operating under one business, and you're operating Tulip Spa. So, she's trying out her own business to see if it's going to work and stuff. You don't, but you didn't get a license with the city for Tulip Spa?
Just Tulip Spa, it's Tulip Spa.
It's not Tulip Spa. This is under a different name.
That's because I use this, this, I can use one. That's the same.
Yeah, sure.
What's the name that it's under?
That's the same. This is Tulip Spa because I, application before is Tulip Spa because I, oh, how would I say? Free application, writing the stuff. I forgot to put on, put on that Tulip Spa. I use this. You want, I think you tell me before I go change, I go, I went to city, I say want to change.
I don't know if she went to the clerk's office and did it, but I noticed that the name on the application was not Tulip Spa.
So, you, so she applied under a different business name with her information, but your contact information. But you can have multiple businesses at one location, but you can't be running Tulip Spa, and she's writing, and she's running another business without Tulip Spa having a license. Both of you need to have a license to run the spa out of this location.
Each is one, you need one license, right?
Yes.
She, that's why it's the one.
She has her own business at this location. She's listed as the owner, but you're the owner of Tulip Spa.
Oh, because I want, I wanted to, she wanted to buy my business. I wanted to, I see, I say, okay, so if you want to buy. Yeah, I have something. Yeah, yeah, talk to you later, okay? I'll talk to you later.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's why if, if, I wanted to sell for her, I don't know.
Last name is gonna be Zebra Hunter Union, first name is William Edward Ida. People do birth, it's gonna be nine nine six seven, nine nine six seven. Okay, do you want a translator? Do you want translator? Because I don't want there to be any miscommunication about this. Do you want a translator?
I don't think so.
Okay, we're just gonna keep her just in case. So you're saying that she wanted to buy your business?
Yes.
And so you're letting her operate to try it out?
Yeah.
But you told me that Tulip Spa is still running. She's just working here.
Still is Tulip Spa. If I sell for her, same, keep, everything's the same.
But she did not register under Tulip Spa, five and one. She registered under a different business name.
Oh, that's, that's, that's the thing.
Ten four.
It is Tulip Spa not changed, so we don't change. So I just have if I, if I want to rent for her, if I want to sell for her, just, just, then just use her, just same this name. Maybe it's my, my building, I don't want, if she doing not good, I want to blow back.
But the problem is, is you didn't apply correctly then. Because she is listed as the owner of one business that's operating out of here, but you're the owner of Tulip Spa that is also operating out of here. So because you are claiming two separate businesses, then you need to have two separate licenses. If she, did she buy Tulip Spa?
She want to, yeah.
She hasn't though, yeah.
She not yet, she wanted to. That's why I want to know.
So why didn't you apply under Tulip Spa and list her as an employee?
She's, she's still want to keep same. She want to keep the name everything same.
But she didn't register under Tulip Spa. She registered under a different business name.
Just because the application make a mistake, it's the same. Just, just application not make a mistake, not writing Tulip Spa. So I can, I can change. If you want to truly sell, I can change, you know, I can change. I don't, I don't know, I think just I need one.
Well, then why is she listed as the owner? But your content, your time, your email and your phone number is listed, but she's listed as the owner.
Because, yeah, because I don't know if I want to truly sell, because you CT must need to have license in the application for April thirtieth. Because I don't know exactly, I want to sell for her or not. That is why.
But that doesn't make any sense, because you would, you're the business owner. You have someone that you're employing, that you're thinking that maybe is gonna buy the business, but you still own and operate Tulip Spa. But that she went and, and put in application, did you put in the application or did you?
I, I do, I do, I hope, I hope, because.
So then you falsify it by saying that she's the owner of the business.
We together, we together doing this, because I think I say, because you April thirtieth, must need to finish the application. She says she wanted to buy, I say, okay, so I don't know if I truly sell you or not, so we just use the name of for the application. The only one, the address, only need to have one license.
But the problem is, is that Tulip Spa is still being operated. You still are operating Tulip Spa, you're the owner of Tulip Spa, you're advertising online that Tulip Spa is operating, have the name out there. So you are operating under Tulip Spa, and she is under a different business. So you have two separate businesses, one that's licensed and one that's not.
Because you need to have one company, right? You, you application?
No, 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 no. You have two separate, you could have multiple businesses under one location, but you only did one business, not Tulip Spa.
Yeah, I remember, I see it's like your address, you began application, must need to have one company, right? Need a company name, because my company name is LLC. Lola got LLC because my Lola got LLC is because, you know, I have more building and in the summer, restaurant, I'm gonna together, so I don't want to use my LLC. I just, because your application need LLC, right? I see the application must need to have LLC. That's why I need a creative LLC, use her name and use here. So if you want to change it, fine, you know, I can change all, but I don't, I don't know, because you only have, need one license.
It's not one license, you need a license per business. It's Massage Establishment. She registered under a different business, and you're operating Tulip Spa. So the information that if you're operating under Tulip Spa...
Okay, I understand now, okay. So I can change, I know, I know your meaning, so because I just think, because your application before, you need to have one name, is you have LLC, like a company, and you know, by your insurance. Because I don't use my, or the LLC, just create a new LLC, that's why she wanted to buy.
Okay, I, I, I hear that you're saying that you were confused, that you wanted one LLC, but the problem is, you listed her as the owner, she is not the owner, you are. And then you put your contact information, you put it under a different name. So she's listed as whatever name. It should be under, regardless, if you want to do it a different LLC, it's supposed to be Tulip Spa, you're operating Tulip Spa. But you put, so you put the wrong owner and you put the wrong business name.
Okay, I can, I can change, I can change.
It needs to be changed, because as of right now, your business Tulip Spa doesn't have a license.
That's the same, it's the same, you see, it's license, she uses she name, right? Is she, uses she name have one? I think it's the same. I think it's.
I don't think she understands.
I, I understand, I understand what she's saying. I understand, truly understand. But I just think you want address, only have, only can use one CT application for one. I can use her name, I can, I'm not, not already know exactly sell for her, but you do, we making money, I do half, half. She get a half, I get a half, my no.
Ownership?
No, yeah, she, yeah, because right now, you own on the menu, if we make it, like I said, if we make one thousand, we have five hundred, five hundred, half, half. Because I wanted to sell for and use his, her name.
It doesn't make sense that the, that this property is under an LLC. Your property is under LLC, but that then, can I take this off the wall?
Yeah, yeah.
So then you, then you, you put it under a different LLC, but there's an LLC that owns this parcel.
Yeah.
But for some reason, you didn't list yourself as an owner, you didn't list that this LLC owns this business, and you put all your contact information and not hers.
She, she, this is she, LLC, I think it's sell, if I sell for her, I just walk away. So she on this LLC.
Okay, but you operate this spa under a different LLC. You're currently operating, you are the owner of that LLC, and you did not apply for a license. She did. You have to get another license through the city with your name, your LLC, stating that you're operating Tulip Spa at nine eighty-nine West Mason Street. You're essentially operating two separate businesses. Now she operates her own LLC, her own business, and if you don't like her, then you can say, I'm not gonna sell to you, you can leave. You know, that's what, that's basically what's gonna happen, you're kind of, she's in a trial period, right? But she's still operating Tulip Spa, and you don't have a license through the city.
That's meaning if, if like I say, if I, if, if I, if just now I sell, if just I sell for, I walk away. This is she have all everything, right? She just have all.
Then she, she has everything, but you are still operating Tulip Spa. You should have both gotten license through the city like you required to. And then if you chose to sell to her, you could then, you could sell, and she would still be good to go to, to operate it. But you are still, you are still operating Tulip Spa. That's why there's a problem. You're still operating here, and you didn't get a license.
You think you need both, need a, need a two license.
Absolutely. You are operating Tulip Spa, you don't have a license through the city.
You don't have two, I think, because I.
Either you operate under Tulip Spa, and she's listed as employee, or you have two separate businesses, but you are still operating Tulip Spa.
I just want to sell for her, this is truly.
But you haven't sold to her. You're still the owner of Tulip Spa, and you're still operating Tulip Spa. You're advertising Tulip Spa. The customers that come in are coming to Tulip Spa for massages.
She don't want to change the name. She want the same Tulip Spa. She don't want to change. She want to keep.
And you need to sell her the business.
You haven't done that.
This is sell the business, this is business sell for, I don't want, yeah. If you want to change it, I can change. I don't know though.
But you have not sold Tulip Spa yet, okay? So she's operating under this business through the city, and you're, you're operating a business that doesn't have a license. Are you listed under employee under her business?
She's not an employee, so we have.
No, for her LLC with, if I get a copy of the application, are you listed as an employee?
No, she's.
So then she's in violation of city ordinance then, because she's not listing you as an employee.
Must is, must is she walking, she buy she stuff in here, I'm not here.
So then you are in violation, because you didn't get a license, and with that license, you need to list your employees, which she would be one of them, because she's working under Tulip Spa.
I see, I, that's why I use her name, she use her LLC, because.
Then why don't you use her contact information? Why would you use your contact information?
She, she, writing there so far, another hundred percent I got to her, and I want to see this English, not that good. I'm not good, but I, but I can understand a little more, so that's why I keep my stuff. When I leave, I give all things for her. But I use another name is nine, nine two oh three three seven, nine, the massage, massage the fine is usually. She never use other number.
You use your email and your phone number?
Use, use my things, use my, my name and my, because I want, she, she don't, she don't want, she husband, know she have a business, she want a divorce, that is why.
It, it doesn't matter, the, the, at the end of the day, she applied for a business license through the city under her ownership and her business name with not the correct contact information, which is also falsifying it, because that's not her information. You did not obtain one, and you were still operating, you own and operate Tulip Spa. You are operating Tulip Spa right now, and you did not obtain a license. She is out of the picture, okay, because she's valid through the city. I mean, she has obviously some things, issues with the license, because she didn't fill it out correctly. Okay, but you did not obtain a license.
That's a misunderstanding. That's, that's truly a misunderstanding. I think it's meaning, I need one, I need one license, one people, one people, use LLC and go application, and all the stuff use one. I don't know, I don't know what need it.
Okay, at that point, Officer Lonsbuck starts using the language line translator that he had on his phone the whole time, and they go over the same questions with the use of interpreter. So at this point, the, the video is pretty cumulative, but that's, that's the nature of the conversation.
Alder Prophet?
I have a follow-up question that stemmed from that video. It was my understanding that as this is a new ordinance, there was first education that was happening at those compliance checks, and I heard the date a few different times, that four thirty, four thirty, that they had to get that application, and I do see that, that was the date that they applied. Was that a hard deadline that was given to the business? That if they don't, if we don't have an application by four thirty, they're gonna have to cease their business?
As the new ordinance rolled out, I don't think that it was a, you have to stop operations. I think that as businesses were getting their licenses, that application date is when the conversation was going to start turning from education to more compliance enforcement. So maybe a warning, maybe a citation. But as you saw with Officer Allen, there was a lot of education happening, trying to explain, this is what you need to do to be compliant. And since that conversation, there have been no modifications, no amendments to the information on the application. The LLC name hasn't been corrected. I mean, there have been no steps taken to correct these inaccuracies from the application.
Thank you.
With this, was this a planned inspection that we saw in that video? Were they aware that someone would be stopping by?
I don't think that the business owners were aware. They were compliance checks, so police and inspection coordinated to make sure that they were checking all massage establishments as part of their compliance checks. But I don't think that the business owners were informed that a visit would be happening.
Okay, gotcha. That's it. Any other questions for Attorney Mays?
Alright, thank you. And so now we can move on to the respondent and their testimony and evidence. We would invite the respondent to come up, and we will swear everybody in. And whoever is actually gonna be presenting testimony or answering questions. But we will also have the interpreter come up and have them sworn in as well. And then we can proceed, and you'll have ten minutes. So if the interpreter as well could come? Right, so in order to ensure that we're being fair and, and there's no impartiality, we will be using the interpreter that, that the city requested from Language Line. Yes.
Which one of us would you like to?
So I, we will be using, we will be using the gentleman from, from the, from the interpreter services, correct? But the respondent, if she would like to have a representative speak on her behalf, that would be fine, but we will need to be using the interpreter.
I understand that. She, she just expressed that she's afraid that there might be miscommunication between them. Maybe because they're from different region, different parts of China, there's different dialects.
Okay.
So she prefer that I'm representing her. Also, not watching this video, I've noticed that there was a lot of miscommunication. So I just kind of explained to her that if she would just communicate to me, I will clearly explaining what she's trying to express, and making sure that all parties here understanding what's going on, so we can have a resolution.
Sure, so our, our standard process is to, to use a, a third-party interpreter. But if you would like for, for you to proceed in confirming.
Is that allowed at, at this situation? That we, is that allowed in this situation, that she would have have her own preferred?
They would just have to be a certified interpreter, correct? So in, in order for, to ensure that there's no impartiality, no bias, and that everything is, is being accurately portrayed to, to the deciding body. So that's why our, our procedure and our process is to have a certified interpreter versus someone who is fluent in the language and, and is capable of interpreting, but maybe does not necessarily have the appropriate credentials.
What would you, what would you suggest in situation? What we, what, what would we do in this situation? What do you suggest?
That we, as I, as I indicated, that we would proceed with the interpreter that we have.
One second, let me center.
I can respect.
Alden Johnson has a question for Attorney Bunker?
Sure.
Yeah, so in this situation, that the reason that she insists that I would be here to assist her is because we don't, I, I know that I'm saying this, but we don't know each other before today. It was just, she hired me as interpreter. I'm also working, I'm a professional interpreter, work for interpretation company as well. The reason she insists is because they're from different region, or different parts of China. Well, they have different dialect. So she is nervous about if there's any more miscommunications happening. And this is very important to her, so she want to make sure that her idea, you know, her explanation is clearly represented as well.
Sure, we can, we can proceed to Attorney Mays.
I just wanted to point out that the respondent here is Wei Wenzhu and Luck Weiji LLC. So as far as Zai Phillyan's preference between who her interpreter is, I suppose that would be left to if counsel opened up the floor for public comment, which seems unorthodox in a quasi-judicial proceeding. But the respondent here is Wei Wenzhu, and the city has procured a certified interpreter, because that's standard judicial procedure.
Thanks, Attorney Mays.
So Zai Phillyan would just like to, she's not here to, you know, to do all, everything for today. She's just here to help explain the situations, where if anybody have questions about the citations, that's all. Yes, yes. And also because the evidence, obviously, we saw from the video, was her conversation with the, the police officer. So she felt like she, you know, needed to be here to support.
Right, so the interpreter, the interpreter here is for the respondent?
Okay, so you're okay that I still working, helping her?
Correct, and so Wei Wenzhu. Correct, and so Wei Wenzhu should be, should be proceeding with, with her evidence and her, and her case.
Okay.
Um, I guess I, I, we would ask for, for the record, in what capacity is, um, I'm sorry, Ms. Filian. Um, testifying today.
Okay.
Cause she's not the respondent in this situation.
All right, so is it okay that I help her? Um, and then assisting in this council meeting, and then that this gentleman will help Ms. Wei, would that be okay? Cause he was hired for the respondent, respondent.
Right, if, if the respondent would like to have Ms. Filian provide testimony on her behalf. Um, we, if, if the council would, uh, be agreeable to that, we can proceed that way, but again, the respondent. Um, Wei Wenzhu will need to be, will need to be presenting, because the, the, um, the complaint for relegation is against. Her application.
Awesome, and I'm gonna.
And then our interpreter would be able to, to facilitate her, her communication for that purpose. So again, uh, we would ask the respondent to proceed with, with her case. So not Ms. Filian, um, if she, if the respondent would like for her to present testimony, uh, at some point. You have ten minutes to present your, your arguments or, and your, your evidence. Um, and then, um, proceed with questions, so we would invite the respondent to proceed. Um, and we can, uh, swear in everybody, so we'll swear in the gentleman, um, I'm sorry, if you would be able to identify yourself. Um, and we'll, we'll be able to administer the oath, thank you.
My name is Gieong, spelled G H E E, last name O N G. I work for the, um, international translators in Green Bay.
The address.
Do you need the address? Mister Wilkett, this is not working at all, so. Clerk Jeffries needs.
The mic, so, there we go, okay, thank you. And, um, Mister Ong, can you get the address of that, um, organization, international translators?
Yeah.
Oh. Have the look up.
Sure.
Look up.
Address is five two nine South Jefferson Street, suite two zero five, and that is in Green Bay.
Okay, Mister Ong, if you would just raise your right hand. Um, do you swear or affirm that you will make inaccurate, complete, and impartial interpretation from the English language into, is it Mandarin Chinese?
Mandarin.
Thank you, and vice versa, of all communications during this proceeding, using your best skill, judgment, and ability. In accordance with the standards prescribed by law and any applicable code of ethics?
Yes, I do.
Great, thank you. And then next, we're gonna swear in, um, the respondent, um, Wei Wenzhu.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Wei Wenzhu, can you spell your name, please?
写出来你的名字，英文名字。Spell is, this is W, sorry? W E I W A N. Last name Z H U.
Okay, thank you. Um. And will you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm? That the testimony you're about to give?
Yes.
Will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, now that we have everybody sworn in, um, the respondent can proceed, um, with her arguments and her testimony, so.
Okay.
Whatever she would like to proceed with, um, and then allow for, um, for the gentleman to be able to translate.
She likes to know why her license has been suspended, and. And she's the only one who works there.
Is that, is that the extent of her, is for her comments for this evening?
She doesn't have any more comments, is like to know the, the answer that she raised.
All right, then, um, then we can turn over, um, to counsel, um, if any of the alders have any questions for the respondent. Um, now would be the time to do so.
Any questions from counsel for the respondent? We do have a couple of alders that are. Can you hear it coming? Just asking if there are any questions for the respondent.
I guess my question would be, um, I noticed in the, in the video that, um. The respondent didn't talk at all, but yet she was supposed to be the business owner. Just, um, I guess I'd like clarification on that.
Uh, she couldn't understand the conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, Alder Presley.
Hi, um, I'd just like to know, does she run the day to day operations of Tulip Spa?
Yes.
Uh, Alder Morgan.
She's gonna bring up in her bag, uh. She said, uh, she knows how to get to her own place, but she cannot remember the address. Is one seven zero four Western Avenue, apartment eight, Green Bay.
Thank you. Any other questions for the respondent? Alder Prophet.
Um, can we confirm, did she fill out the application, and does she know what the application's intent was?
Um, she knows the application was the purpose for that, but she did not fill out the form herself. It's the other lady that helped her fill out the application.
Has she purchased the business?
Yes, she says she did.
For how much?
She pays six thousand a month for the rent and, um, lawn care, et cetera.
And she's operating as Tulip Spa or what she has put in the application? Could we confirm, now that the business has sold, it sounded like, based on the video, that. It hadn't happened at that point, um, so what is she operating the current business as, and is there any other operations outside of hers operating?
Um, she says she changed to a lucky wound, she couldn't, uh, remember the second word. And she also say it's like she's actually paying rent six, uh, six thousand a month.
Does she have plans to change the signage?
She has no intentions to change, because she said, uh, customers accustomed to the name already. Uh, she will change if she has to.
Okay. And any other question, yeah, a few, um, Alder Stevens, and then Morgan and Presley.
All right, thank you. Um, I don't know if it'd be for her, or maybe for our law department. My understanding is, this is an LLC, but any LLC can do business as any other operator's name. You know, my business is Daymark LP Holdings, and we do business as Linden Point Apartments. So what would be stopping them from doing Tulip Spa under their LLC?
Right, so I think the important part is who is holding the license?
Which, we have this lady here.
Right, well, the LLC that, um, that she owns is holding the license, and that, that's the, the crux of what the, the complaint is about. So not so much as the entity that's doing business as, but the fact that the entity that is operating is not, doesn't actually exist. Um, that's operating there, and then also additionally, there is an entity that's operating that doesn't have a license. But we can't revoke a license that doesn't exist. Um, the, the matter before the council today is the, the complaint that's being presented, that. That license that has been issued, um, to an LLC that is not registered. Um. That filed the complaint with, with the allegations that Attorney Mays presented should be revoked.
Because of incorrect LLC.
Correct, well, and then mixing up of, of information, correct?
But she could operate under Tulip.
Just, just a reminder that this is just for questions for the respondent at this time.
All right, all right, I have a moment to explain what you just said. Um, she asked, um, since, um, this lady said that the, uh, LLC. Doesn't exist, and then she likes to know what. She can do, or how can she start to get her own legitimate business?
Okay, um, Alder Presley, and then Alder Morgan, was it?
What is the role of, uh, Ji Filian at the, uh, current Tulip Spa?
Can you explain that again, rephrase?
Sorry, uh, uh, Ji Filian, her associate, what does she do at Tulip Spa right now?
Um, she does massage in that business.
Is she just a massage, uh, therapist, or does she have additional roles in the business?
She provides massage, and also is, uh, she says she's responsible to come up with the, uh, six thousands every month.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am, when, when you have an opportunity to, to testify, you'll be able to, to state what the correction is. Okay, thank you.
Alder Morgan?
Employees, does she have?
Um, there was one part time worker, and he worked, or. It's a she, and, uh, she did not work, uh, full time, she just part.
Does, uh.
She no longer work over there anymore.
Uh. Does this lady hold the Wisconsin massage therapist license? The one you were communicating for us here?
Yes, she does have a license.
Thank you.
Alder Gob.
Thank you, um. She is renting the property and the business?
Yes, she thinks is renting.
And, and who is she renting from?
Uh. She says she's renting from this lady over here.
All right, and does she have a written rental agreement?
Yes.
Did she bring it with her?
Yes.
Hold on, um, I would ask Attorney Bunker, is it proper for us to review that at this time?
If, if, if the respondent would like to enter that into evidence to, to indicate her, her, um. Possession and interest in, in the business, that would be up to her.
Did she approach with the rental agreement?
Yes. To provide a copy of the rental agreement? Is that a copy that we can keep for the record?
Is is that a copy we can keep?
Yes.
Alright.
Yes, you you will you will have you will have time if if the respondent would like you to to present testimony on her behalf, then then we'll be able to do that.
Yes, thanks.
This uh this lease agreement is dated August twenty fifth. Uh originally was twenty twenty-three, but that was crossed out to be twenty twenty-four, is that accurate?
She's not sure.
This is working. Question before us is whether or not this was if we issued a valid license, correct? So the information that was on the application was inaccurate. The information that was sent regarding the insurance.
Just just for questions at this time.
Sorry.
We we we're working on the date. Was the date accurate, August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four?
Okay, um, she's asking uh oh whether can help her to explain this the change of date.
Well, I I guess my my question is this complaint is filed as of uh an incident that took place on September sixth of twenty twenty-four. Yet she has a rental agreement that's dated August twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-four. In which she claims to be then the renter of this establishment, but as this thing gets kind of muddy here, does this pertain to the complaint then or does this have any effect on the complaint? Okay, I'll I'll I would I'm I'm gonna skip that, withdraw that, um. Okay, and then I just want to reaffirm the only employee there currently is this this lady that you're interpreting for right now.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Alda Johnson?
Thank you, mayor. I just I I just wanna seek clarification on a point that Alder Prophet had asked. And i- is it accurate that you have purchased Tulip Spa?
She hasn't bought it, she's renting.
Okay. Okay, and she still owns Luck. Uh forgive my pronunciation, Luck Wicksey Therapy LLC?
Can you repeat the name, she doesn't know of that name that you just mentioned?
Let me let me withdraw that because I'm seeing that Luck Wicksey Therapy LLC is the owner of Tulip Spa, is that? Yep, okay, sorry, I I um I thought I'm reading the wrong one, um. Okay, let me let me come back to that point.
Any other questions?
If we have if if we have no other questions, um if the respondent would like Ms. Philion to present testimony, we can um swear her in and her chosen interpreter. Um, I would just advise counsel that um as this isn't a interpreter that we have any any credentials for and is not one that was hired by the city. Um, you can you can take that into your deliberations um or in into consideration as to the um credibility. So i- at this point, um if Ms. Philion would like to present testimony, um the respondent can sit down. And she'll have opportunity to do a rebuttal if she so chooses.
She doesn't have any more things to say.
Perfect, thank you very much. Alright, so we'll have, yes, yes.
The interpreter, yes. Yes, tell me your name.
Lindsay Roke.
And spell that. Okay, and your address, work address is fine?
Forty-six West Seventeenth Avenue, Oshkosh, Wisconsin, five four nine oh two.
And then raise your right hand, Ms. Roke. Um, do you swear or affirm that you will make an accurate, complete and impartial interpretation from the English language into is this Mandarin Chinese?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and vice versa? Of all communications during this proceeding using your best skill, judgment and ability in accordance with the standards prescribed by law and any applicable code of ethics?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you, and now Ms. Philion? Hey, Ms. Philion, please uh state and spell your name. And your address?
Five oh two State Street, Madison, Wisconsin. And and still have nine in our estimation, the address too.
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
We have two addresses, one is five oh two State Street because my restaurant out of Madison.
Okay, that's fine. And then uh Ms. Philion, uh please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony? Ms. Roke, are you going to are you going to uh interpret for Ms. Philion?
Say that one more time, I was trying to communicate with them so they can stop.
Certainly, do you swear or affirm that the testimony? You are about to give will be the truth.
Of course, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, at this point, you have you have the floor to be able to present uh your testimony um to the allegations.
Okay, um so um in order to sort everything out here today, um because I have an interpreter here that I thought very, you know, I thought I can trust her to help me explain everything. Uh is it okay I can start by explaining uh the citations, if that's okay? I want to know if that's granted. All the citations, all the um issues, you know, that were um mentioned by the lawyer.
She can she can choose to to proceed up with whatever testimony she wants to to provide.
Turn on, um the the purpose of the hearing today isn't to relitigate these ten citations, um so I mean if there are some um overview type comments similar to those that I made about the citations, I think that would be appropriate, but um we certainly don't need to get into the nitty-gritty of each and every one of those violations.
Sure, attorney may, you'll be able to address that when we have rebuttal time, um but as this that time is for the respondent to present their their evidence, they can choose to to address what issues they feel are important for their defense.
Because they make a mistake, it's not me, they give the tickets, it's not me, I'm in the restaurant in the Madison. And two thousand twenty-three have two, yes, I know, after that eleven eleven uh use employee don't have a without the license. That's why they, one day they go two and three tickets, I think that one week, is they make a mistake, they wanna give, you know. That's why I wanted to say, that's why I want to explain, you know.
Sure, and and for the interest of of so that everybody, so communication is is clear, if we can use the interpreter services that you you elected to choose, so you can proceed and make whatever statements and explanations, but um we want to make sure that we have a clear and accurate record of what you're saying, yes.
She um 就是啊 from what she explained to me, she said um because the citations, um many of them that she wasn't aware is because she was she was running a bus running a restaurant business in Madison. So it was um family member who um friends and family member was in this business. That they they don't speak English, there's lots of misunderstanding. Um, that's why she like it it's not like she's aware of that, it's not fixing anything. Um, she wasn't aware most of the citations. She wasn't ignore anything on purposely, it was just uh she had many businesses to run and like kind of um not able to take care of this right away, not able to communicate right away as well. But I understand that even though that it wasn't me in the running the bus the massage business and the citation happened, but it's still under my name, so it's still my responsibility, um you know, even though that I'm not in there, I wasn't aware of anything going on, I s- that's why I still wants to pay the citations, I want to be cooperative because it's I I still admit my part responsibility. Because I, yes, so because I uh want to cooperate with the police officer, um I don't want to argue, I don't want anything. Um, I just want to explain that I didn't do this on purpose, I was running other businesses and it was the family member and friends that's running this. And this when this when I noticed this happened, I paid the tickets right away, I tried to do everything I can to be cooperative, cooperative, not fighting on anything. And I also felt like um even though I I felt like I speak okay English, um but there's still a lot times when I communicate with people like such as like officer, even through the video, um that you know, like there's a lot of miscommunication because I wasn't understanding them clearly, they wasn't understanding me clearly and um there's no interpretation provided during those investigation or any, you know, site check and stuff, um.
No, you don't need to change, if the police come here, just call me.
Okay, so um because with all the misunderstanding and miscommunication um on that video, um I still did everything that the police officer asked me to do, they asked me to change the names and everything. And I tried to come to the city hall and talk to like a staff employee to try to do the things that you require me to do. But then the point here, which is I have her card, tell me that you don't need to do anything, you have the right to operate businesses, have different LLC names. Um, if the police come again, you can call me. Um, so so it make me very confused, first of all, um that the communication with the police officer was um it wasn't very clearly there, we were not understanding each other clearly, but even even in the end, when I tried to,等一下，等一下 even um sorry, I just because she's just rushing to tell me things, I want to explain clearly. So even though when I tried to make changes and then I was told by the city hall employee said I don't need to do anything. So the whole thing was very confusing to me, I felt like I did, you know, everything I could, but still um that I'm not sure exactly what needs to be done, like I'm not sure what are the requirements, um what is wrong and why they're wrong and what need to be done, um so. Yeah, uh it's because um when I talked to the city hall worker, they tell me that I don't need to change anything, that's why I didn't do anything. But then three weeks later, I got the notice that they were gonna revoke the license. Um, so um that's why I want to explain everything, um. Yes. Is there any any other questions or can she continue?
Attorney Bungard first.
Uh, we can, we you still have, the respondent still has four minutes. 嗯，什么意思?
它building是my,当时my building是LLC,是Lola Garden LLC,那个business也是when she lucky LLC,当时那是to LLC. 你说why是building 为什么
因为你还没有说明白嘛
Just to make the point that dialogue should be between the counsel and and the witness here, not between you two.
Yeah, yeah, because the that lady said she can continue to explain, have four minutes to explain, that's why she's trying to you know, explain more situation to me like interpret that's happening. So um what she just said was that the reason there was two LLCs is because um like the building, the building itself is under one LLC. And then that the the business itself, because she want, she doesn't want this business anymore, you know. Uh, so Ms. Ju is the buy, is the per, you know, was the gonna buy this business. And then for the application, it requires another LLC's name, that's why there's another LLC involved.
是因为他申请执照必须要有个LLC.
Because the uh the application, the license application requires an LLC, that's why I applied a new one just for the license.
Lola Garden LLC is my building and my business. That's why they they police say, why you use that Lola Garden LLC, just knows Lucky LLC. Because my building is building, business is business, this is business, why you use the Tulip Spa? I said LLC, you can use other names. Any anyone else, I have restaurant, I have um my ice cream, ice cream store, restaurant, I use one LLC. I want LLC can use a three-store business. The police say, no, you only can use one, you need to go change, so I go to change. So the the city hall say you don't need to change, so two weeks later I receive this. Then that this the girl give me this, give me uh this in college, she say I can call her, if a police come, just call her.
Okay, um
And I have one other, one other, because I worried the time not enough, okay. That the rent, why is six thousand? Because apartment here one thousand and um building two thousand five hundred and the insurance and the uh cut grass and the um like especially everything all and the insurance all everything total six thousand, it's not I charge it, no, no, it's all you 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 send together. Because apartment I hope her pay and building I hope to pay everything, just all everything. That's why I worried the time not enough, so I just Because apartment I hope her pay and building I hope to pay everything, just all everything, that's why, I worried the time not enough, so I just use, I speak yes, not so good, I'm sorry about that.
Um, she wants to know that what she just said, was it clear, that doesn't make any sense?
应该是。
Was it clear information, does anybody have questions on?
听懂了吗？
She just explained.
Okay, is she finished with testimony?
Okay,那你还有你还有什么要说的吗？ 嗯。嗯，对。对。Okay。Okay, um, so, again, she wants to go back to the citations, the citations from twenty twenty three, when the first one when she got it, that, um, she what she. Learned that, um, every employee in the business has to has a license, um, that's why, since, so she understood that, and then since then, she has not have, there's no, nobody working in that shop. In that business has no license, that's why Miss Zhu, who has license, is the only one working in the business.
后一，后一。
Yes, for entire year of twenty twenty three, Miss Zhu there is the only one that's working there. 嗯。
Yeah, so I'm still very confused, um, why my license, um, needs to be re, why the license for the shop has to be revoked, um, and then.
没有。
I I don't feel like I was understanding the whole situation clearly, if anything that's can be changed, can be adjusted, I'm willing to do anything, I'm willing to do anything to be cor- cooperative. But this entire thing, I feel like I'm very confused, um, because, um, the miss, the communication with the police officer wasn't clear, but in the end, I was like, okay, whatever you want me to do, I'm gonna do it. But then I come to the city hall and we're trying to communicate with the worker, and they tell me that you don't need to do anything, that's why I didn't do anything, so then I I got a notice that I. I'm gonna lose the, you know, the the shops gonna lose the business license. Yeah, so I I I would like to, um, you know, um, ask if I could have another opportunity, cause now that I have interpreter here. That can, um, help me understand the whole thing, I I would write down exactly what needs to happen and make sure that. Things have, you know, done exactly correctly and properly and help Miss Zhu to take over the business successfully as well, um, and then I would, I would ask. Um, for, um, forgiveness and opportunity to make this correct and and continue to have this license, because, um, she felt like. There's very deep, deep language barriers and miscommunications happening here, um, she has never, um, had any intentions to break any rules. Um, or not being cooperative, or, um, try to deceive anything, it's, it's just, again, that she felt like she understands everything, but clearly. Even me, like, from watching the video, there was just, I felt like there were not frost. So. Yeah。I felt like the video towards the end of the video, there was more information, there was more important information to me, but it wasn't pre- uh, presented to the audience today. Uh, the first fifteen minutes doesn't, um, I felt like it didn't do justice explain this whole situation, um, so.
Get not the time has expired。
Thanks for your testimony, your your time is expired, so if we have questions from our counsel, um, Alder Stevens and then Alder Hutchison, Hutchison.
Okay。
Alright, thank you, I have two questions actually for you, so you stated that you come to city hall and you talk to a staff member, I see you have a business card, is that the individual that you spoke with?
Yeah。你等一下，他就问你是不是，你是不是跟这个人说。
Yeah。
And the name on that business card?
Yeah。
Yes。
The name?
那这这个名字叫什么？
Huh? Oh, what is the name?
It's a, a card from South East Jeffrey's Park, someone wrote Chanel.
Yeah, okay, so you spoke with a Chanel? Over to the microphone and use your interpreter please.
你不要，你你不要这样子，我就要，你跟我说，你听我，你冷静下来，I'm just trying to calm her down, because I know this very, this this is very difficult, because she's so. Nervous and she's all overwhelmed, so I I just wanna make sure that it's clear, so I'm not, I'm I'm not, I'm just trying to calm her down。你要冷静，冷静一下，okay, it's okay, she's very emotional, so I'm trying to。
Well, this is all new to us, so we're, this whole ordinance is new to us, we're working through this, so。
Yes。
But if someone said something to her. And if it's incorrect information, we need to, we need to know that。
Because, because I'm not。因因为因为我们有错。
嗯哼。
Yeah, so, um, I felt like, um. I felt like there's injustice in this, even in the citations, um. That I didn't, I didn't understand. Sorry, I didn't understand completely what's going on, but because they are the police officer. I didn't feel like I have a chance to fight or explain myself, so I still hate every, all of this, um, so that's it, I'm sorry, this is very unprofessional, sorry。
No, no, you're okay。
因为因为因为我是，因为我是开餐厅的，谢谢你，因为我sorry about your emotions, so because that feels。
你不要，不要说英语。
就是就这个女的，安乐，就这个女的。
So, this officer, um, she has given me, um, I feel like. She have give, all the things are from the same officer, I felt like she. For some reason, um, it's, I don't know why she, she, um. I didn't feel like her citations are are justice, are, um. Are being completely fair, um, I feel like she's on to me, um, and I tried everything, you know, like I, and I didn't feel, I felt like she's authority. I don't know why she does all this, you know, she she would just feel so, you know, make it so difficult for me, but I understand she's authority, she's the officer, and, um. I I felt, um, I felt like I'm not in a position where I could.
Okay。
Be heard, and, yes。
So I do have a question, I personally, I do personally have issues with that video that I saw this evening, but I do have a question for you, what citations were you issued during that video that was that we just saw?
就那。
来视频那次有给你开吗？ 就你一次没开。
唯一的一次没有。
Okay, so she gave me a citation。
因为有五个警察在。
Every time she come visit me, the only time she did not give me a citation was the video, the taken, because there was other officers was a, was presented, there was, there was more than her, there was other officers were there too. Um, so I think, I personally think that she just said, she said, do you think that's why she didn't get a citation, but every other time, other than that, she came and she gave me a citation。
你有。
So no citations were issued that day, was the business closed down that day from the police department?
就是要我去改，要我去change嘛，要我去CT change啊。
嗯，但没有改，没有关是吗？
没，啊，就是two weeks later就就这个了。
啊，没有关掉是吗？
啊啊，就是要我去。
No, they didn't, they didn't change, they didn't close my business, um。
陪我每个CT。
She she just tell me to change all these things needs to change, that's why I went to the city hall and tried to talk to this worker on this card, and they tell me that I'm, I don't need to do anything. So I mean that, I mean here that the police officer who is on to me, give me all these citations all the time, and tell me to do this and that, and I go to the city hall worker, and then they said I don't have to do anything. So I, so that's, she's very confused about the situation.
Okay, thank you. I think Alder Hutchison and then Grant, yeah.
Okay, um, hi, um, I have a question regarding. Laura Garden LLC, that's you, right?
My building。
Okay, and you have the insurance, okay, and that's the insurance that was used for the luck therapy. And I think that's just the sticking point, because your landlord and she's renter, and I think the renter also has to have the insurance. Cause it's her business, because the application was under her, so she would also have to have the insurance, so that's just。
Can you phrase that as a question for me?
Does, does, do you know if the applicant under luck, wexil therapy LLC has the insurance?
Yeah, half one million, I have, you know my phone。
That's your building, but she she。
No, be a business that a lucky LLC have one million, I you know my phone, uh, my。
She's saying that, um, the the person, you know, the the business name under, you know, the name that's the company that's the business is under, have its own insurance。
Right。
Yeah。
And I understand that。
It's a separate insurance, yeah。
Separate。
But it's not in the system, right?
Oh, it's not, it wasn't on the application.
So I made a mistake on the application, um。
当时来不及，必须在四月三十号结束。
Because there's a deadline by April thirtieth, and they, I I was, I I felt like very rushed and very stressed out for the date. So I just used the insurance that I had under the building。
然后就买了新的，然后，然后过几天就买了。
那你买了有没有改呢？
买，要要要买了，买了。
改了，改了没有？
买买了，买了在我这里。
Yeah, but I know that the insurance information was not correct, that's why, as soon as the application was done, that the business itself, separate from my building, has its own insurance. I just, I did not know how to change that, I did not know how to update that, yeah, but there, she has her own insurance。
She has her own insurance, okay, so I wanted to know, thank you。
Yeah, it was purchase。Yeah, she does。
Alder Grant?
I'm。
Okay, any Alder Preston?
Thank you, you said there was an issue with the translation, uh, when I asked a question earlier, what was that issue with the translation to the respondent?
对。
你跟我讲一下，你你你中文再说一下。嗯。嗯。嗯。嗯。嗯。
Oh, um, so the question was misinterpreted, because you were asking, we we both heard you were asking, who, what is Zephilia, which is her, doing in the shop, right?
Correct。
But was interpreted to Miss Zhu that, what is she doing, that's why she was answering the questions, so she was, Miss Zhu was answering what she was doing as the owner. She wasn't answering you guys, what is she, you know what I mean, Miss Zephilia was doing, that was, that was the misinterpretation。
So what what is, um, Miss Philian's role, uh?
呃，他就，他就问你，你是做什么的，就是你。
对啊，我在餐，因为我开餐厅，我现在想在Green Bay再开，在做做开一个餐厅，我一个吉他的，因为我想我喜欢Green Bay这边。
嗯。对，然后呢？ 你不要讲那么多，你就讲你在店里是做什么的。
Okay, so, um, it's because the reason, the, my biggest role in this is kind of help nurturing Miss Zhu, as you can see, she doesn't speak English, she, she has. She doesn't, you know, she this is, she's very new as a business owner, and she doesn't speak almost any English at all, so my role is to help her, nurturing her, to take over the business successfully. Uh, it's also because I have other, many other businesses as well, I have businesses in medicine, I'm into restaurants business, and I want to, um, open more restaurant businesses in Green Bay. That's why that, um, I'm very busy, you know, like, uh, going through all my businesses, but when I have time, I'm trying to help Miss Zhu. Uh, because her, you know, just kind of helping her, assisting her in the purchase. But that, again, that wasn't, that wasn't interpret to Miss Zhu earlier, like she, it was completely different, so, yeah。
Thank you。
Alder Prophet?
Thank you。
So I've heard her mention Madison a few times, is that her primary residence?
Yeah, Madison most of the time。
Madison most of the time, okay, um, and then you clearly have a stake in this operation, um, as you were assisting with the application and whatnot, so how frequently do you come visit the establishment up here?
Um, a few times a month。
Few times a month, um, and then that rental agreement that she provided, just wanting to confirm that tw- year twenty twenty three was crossed off, and then it said twenty four, was the rental agreement for twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four?
Yeah。
他就说，等一下，你等一下，他就说。
我我我听了，我听了，我听了。
嗯。对对对对，对。啊。啊。对。
Okay, okay, so the reason there is a date modification is because, um, so before Miss Zhu took over the business, um, there was another buyer, I took out the twenty two.
我那个日期。
Um, and then I asked my lawyer to draw, uh, the contract for that, and then, um, and Miss Zhu and I are like best friends, like really good friends, uh, together. So I didn't do any, any changes, I just did the same thing, as for her, I just crossed the date, that's why。
Okay。
Cause it was for her, in in her mind, um, she, you know, I don't know whether that's legal or not, but in her mind, that was okay, because it's the same thing, and she just crossed the date。
嗯。
Okay。
Okay, and then I just wanna make sure that she understands the rental agreement she shared with us has that August twenty fifth of twenty twenty four date, but the application for this license.
嗯。
Came through on April thirtieth, twenty twenty four, so at that time, that rental agreement was not in place, and what was included, and that's what we're discussing tonight, I just wanna make sure she understands.
嗯。嗯。
What was within that application was not jiving with what was happening at at the establishment, I just wanna make sure that's clear for her。
Okay。
So can I reframe that, I just wanna make sure that I'm getting you correct。
Yes。
So the application, uh, was, the the license for application was processed in April, right, and then the con- the date on the contract was in August, so there is a four months gap, you wanna understand why there is a four months gap, right?
Well, I just wanna make sure she's aware that there's that discrepancy there with what she's provided to us。
Yes, yes。
Is she aware that that is there?
啊。啊。
Yeah。
哦。啊。嗯。嗯。嗯。嗯。嗯。啊。啊。Okay。
Um, because, because, um, there was, again, there was like this stress about, you know, like, there's a de- there's, again, there's a deadline is April thirtieth, so I was desperate, I was trying to make sure that the business doesn't get closed down, I was just trying to do. Everything a rush, and through this process, I made a lot of mistakes, and then there was, also there was trial time with Miss Zhu, because she really wants to buy the business. But, um, I also wanna make sure, you know, like, this goes well, she goes well for her, because I don't wanna save this business to get shut down, um, so there's a lot of confusion with that, but I'm aware that was a mistake of of mine, yeah。
嗯，不是，不要说，不要说，不要讲，不要讲。
So, um, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding as well。
Yeah。
At that time, because the rental agreement was not in place, was the business still operating under Laura Garden LLC?
嗯。
In which the malpractice insurance was included on the application, is she, was she the operator at the time that the application was submitted?
嗯。
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so from April to um, the rental date, me and Miss Drew were running it together, because I had a license at time, you know, um, so I had a license and we were doing it together. Yeah. 嗯。嗯。Yeah.
后来我的，后来我就上课，上好了，租个又回来了。
Okay, and then so when, when the date, you know, so the date on the contract happened is because my own license, I stopped that, you know, because my, I stopped doing this with her together, because uh, my, my license was, was revoked by, because of the citations, the police process, same police process keep giving me. And so I realized that, okay, so I don't have lessons anymore, I need to do this officially, so I, I can't be part of this anymore, she has to take over completely, that's why this happened. 真的，不要说，不要说，嗯。Okay.
早就可以了，反正。
And then after, you know, after the rental property, uh, you know, since the rental property date, right, I want to take classes, which it was required um, to get my license back, and I did, I want to get education, I want to go get classes, and then now that I have my license back too, yeah.
Thank you.
好。
Any other questions? All right, thank you for your testimony, Ellen rebuttal.
You don't have to do that. Um, so if there's no more questions, then Miss Fillion and the interpreter can sit down. Um, and then we will have, you'll have an additional, there'll be an additional five minutes for either the respondent, or if she chooses for you to um, testify again. Um, but we'll proceed with five minutes for uh, attorney may.
他问你还有没有要说的？
我想说一句，你说我先说。
Can, can she has one more thing to say, if that's okay?
Yeah.
So she'll have an additional, she'll have an additional time to come back up.
你，你后面还有时间，后面还有时间，先不要说。
我现在就。
Potentially, yeah, okay?
好，okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, I will try not to use my full five minutes, um. So, we've heard a couple of times that the communication from Officer Allen on September sixth was not very clear, I, I've watched the video a number of times, um, Officer Allen spent fifty minutes explaining the situation, um, there were other officers present, there was a um, interpreter that was used um, at the point where, where we stopped the video, I think that the communication was very clear as far as what the expectations were. Um, Miss Fillion commented that she wanted another opportunity, that she would um, do whatever needed to be done in order to um, move forward with, with this business, but um, Miss Fillion never applied, she's not looking for another opportunity, this isn't her license, this isn't her business. Um, she referred to the license as her license, um. These statements are very clear that Miss Fillion, filling out this application, submitting it under somebody else's name, that, that this was intentionally deceptive, that it was fraudulent. Um, the statements that Officer Allen issued, all of the citations that are contained in Exhibit Two, I just went through municipal court records. Officer Castren issued a citation, Officer Allen um, issued multiple citations, Officer Robinson issued a citation, Inspector Rosenthal issued citations, Officer Lentz issued citations. We've got four uh, community police officers and a housing zoning inspector who have issued citations, this is not a personal vendetta, um, resulting in those citations. Not to mention, those citations weren't considered because Xi Fillion's name wasn't associated with the application that came through. Uh, Miss Fillion mentioned that she took classes, um, because she wanted to um, improve her massage therapy knowledge, uh, those classes were required by Department of Safety and Professional Services in order to reinstate her massage and bodywork license. Um, bottom line. We have a citation, or not a citation, we have a license that was issued to Luck Weixi Ele- Therapy LLC, this LLC doesn't exist. Luck Wenzi Therapy LLC with a registered agent of Weiwen Zhu is registered under the DFI, Department of Financial Institutions. We've heard a lot of muddying of the waters, there's been a lot of confusion flying around about who owns what. At this point, the proper course of action that I would advocate this council to take would be to revoke this license. This isn't Chapter one twenty-five, this isn't a liquor license, there's no twelve-month period where someone is not eligible to reapply. If the business has changed hands, and I don't, I mean, there's a lease agreement, but it doesn't, there's nothing saying that the business has, has changed hands. Um, with the, the changing of the dates, the end date of the contract is unclear. Um, because it says six years, but then provides a, uh, an end date that's five years down the road, so I'm not, I'm not sure how valid this, this lease is. Um, there's no date of signature um, for when it was executed, um, so, I mean, give the lease the, the credibility and the gravity that you think that it's, it's worth. But bottom line is, we have mixed information submit, in an application submitted by Xi Fillion on behalf of Weiwen Zhu. This is intentionally deceptive, this is misleading information presented in the application, that, the, the license was granted to an entity that doesn't exist. Weiwen Zhu can apply for another license, but this license that's been granted to an LLC that doesn't exist should be revoked, thank you.
Thank you, questions, uh, Alder Prophet?
Yeah, I just have a quick one to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying, if we choose to revoke the license that's before us, that is inaccurate in many ways, as we've detailed tonight. There is nothing stopping either of the respondents that were communicating from applying tomorrow for the same address, under all the proper information with all their, for lack of a better term, ducks in a row.
They could submit an application, um, the business would not be allowed to operate until a new license is granted, so there may be a, a, an, a period until that application can go through committee and council, but there's nothing in the ordinance preventing another application with accurate information submitted by the applicant, um, and the business owner to be submitted, um, and to go through the proper channels.
Thank you.
Alder Stevens?
Attorney May, uh, I do have a question for you, so in that video, it shows like we issued the license for her, and now we want to revoke it, when did we determine that it was invalid license that was issued?
Uh, as a follow-up to this compliance check, um, when we, um, when, when officers and inspection gathered the information from Miss Fillion during this uh, compliance check, um, the, the, the answer is as far as why Xi Fillion's email address, um, proof of insurance, phone number were used, um, weren't adequately answered, um, and upon running the LLC through the DFI, um, website and the, the corporation lookup, realized this entity doesn't exist, which was a, 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 a big reason why I didn't feel like further education or attempts at compliance would, would be appropriate.
So what steps are we taking when someone fills out a application for a license, why wasn't this caught immediately before we issued this license, this staff?
So, so staff is, um, we've had discussions about who's looking at what portion of the application, we have tightened that up. Um, at the end of the day, the applicant is certifying that the information contained in the application is accurate, is truthful, is correct. This information was not accurate and not correct, so from a staff standpoint, we have, we have taken additional steps to clarify our roles.
Well, I'm glad that we're hearing we're taking additional steps, because it's all new to us, but if we issued this license and then X amount of weeks, days, months later, we found out, wait a minute, this is actually incorrect because of an error. Why are we going down this road, why didn't we just correct this with this business instead of bringing all of us into this? When City Hall missed it to begin with?
The information submitted was inaccurate.
But.
Uh, we, we, we do the steps that we can to screen these to the best of our ability as staff.
But you, but you've been saying you, you put it into this program and it kicked back as not being accurate, so why did we miss that the first time?
This is a new ordinance, as far as how we go through, um, how deep of an investigation are we doing into each application, is an ongoing discussion. Um, so, at that point, I, I, I don't know if there was a clear expectation as far as who's checking to make sure this is a valid LLC.
So, would you agree that both parties are at fault here?
No, I would not, um, there was inaccurate information that was submitted.
But it should have been caught before we issued that license.
It potentially could have been caught.
But it was not.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions? I'll take out.
Whose responsibility is it when you're applying for a license to make sure the information's accurate, the city or the applicant?
The, the applicant is the one certifying that the information is true and accurate.
And if we miss it, then that's not our fault, that's still their fault that they have wrong information on their application.
I, I would agree with that.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Alder Johnson then, Preston.
Just one question, Attorney May, so, um, if we assumed for a moment that the misspelling in the name was a Scrivener's error, um, the way that I understand it, and again, I just want to be crystal clear on this, right, we still have, the name on the application is not the registered agent of that LLC?
Correct.
Okay, that, and, and again, I just want to be crystal clear on that.
The, the, the LLC that was granted a license does not have a registered agent because that LLC does not exist. The, the, the registered agent for the very similar, um, Luck Wenji Therapy LLC is Weiwen Zhu, who we've heard from tonight. So, so this LLC is registered with the DFI, this LLC not registered with the DFI was granted the license.
Alder Preston?
So, if, if Weiwen Zhu um, had done this form correctly, um, and if she had put down the name of her LLC correctly, um, and it also supplied her own insurance instead of relying on Ji Fillion's uh, insurance, um, would it, would everything else with this still be okay? Would it still be okay to have uh, Ji as a mentor in the space while not necessarily owning it, uh, to be the landlord of the building, um, and rent it out with these additions?
I, I, I appreciate the comment, and if, 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 if Xi Fillion was affiliated as an agent of the LLC or an employee, that would have to be disclosed. It was not disclosed, um, in fact, this application was submitted for Weiwen Zhu by Xi Fillion. She was certifying that Weiwen Zhu's application was truthful and accurate, but she was submitting it for someone else. This is, this is a deceptive application.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alder Gob.
Okay, uh, I'm sorry, just a little bit more clarification. So, item five, petitioner, uh, as of September sixth, has been made aware that massage license establishment granted to Luck Weixi is currently operating as Tulip Spa. Is that accurate?
Tulip Spa had been operating under Laura Garden LLC, prior to the ordinance effect, taking effect. The, 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 the parcel is owned by, and is still owned by Laura Garden LLC, registered agent Xi Fillion. When the massage establishment ordinance went into effect, then we see this application with an applicant of Weiwen Zhu, who did not have a lease, had not been transferred any ownership interest. Um, and as we saw in the video, had not purchased the, the, the business as of September sixth. This lease that's been provided, um, has a date of a couple of weeks before that, so why, when officers and inspection were doing compliance checks, they said that, or Xi Fillion said that the business had not been sold, that Weiwen Zhu was not the owner, I, I don't know how to reconcile that discrepancy.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thanks, Attorney May.
Yes, at this time, if the respondent um, would like to um, present a rebuttal, or if the respondent would like to elect to have Miss Fillion as her witness, um, proceed with the rebuttal, um, that would be the time for that.
Uh, she's asking her license not to be revoked because she needs to work.
Any questions for our respondent?
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, this concludes the, the uh, testimony portion of this hearing, um. We do not have closed session language, um, for the quasi-hearing, um, but uh, council may um, deliberate an open session to the extent that the alders feel comfortable, um, otherwise, uh, council can take everything under advisement um, that was presented today, um, on the record, um, and then this item can be taken up for deliberation. By findings of fact and conclusions of law to be entered at the next council meeting, so I would, I would um, defer to council as to how they wish to proceed. Um, otherwise you can move, um, with a motion to, um, to take under advisement, um, for action at the next council meeting.
Uh, Alder Stevens?
Just an oversight. Yes.
Thank you. Alder Johnson?
Yeah, Attorney Bunker, just procedurally, you know, because we, we've gone through these a number of times in the past, and
嗯。
obviously, um, we, we can debate and make a recommendation or decision, but typically then, um, you would take that, or someone from your, your team would take that. Uh, uh, and, and draft the findings of fact and conclusion, bring it back to our next council meeting for us to, uh, to adopt accordingly. So my point is, you know, if we, if we, we could debate this today in, in open session, where historically it's closed, I, I don't know, it's tomato, tomato to me, but if we were to delay it, then the next meeting, we could go into closed session, and then we talk about findings of fact and conclusion, and then it goes to the meeting after that, right, to, to actually be adopted, so it delays it another meeting, um, is.
Sorry to interrupt, be, just so I can correct that a little bit, um, we, we have the opportunity to create, um, findings of fact, so depending on the complexity of the matter, sometimes staff is able to have draft findings of fact and conclusions of law, based on the evidence and the findings that are presented in the, in the testimony and through the record. Um, and sometimes it's not possible to do that, or it becomes a little complicated, so in this instance, um, I believe staff would be able to per, uh, put together draft findings of fact um, and conclusions of law, um, and have, um, available options depending on the deliberations of, of council, and have that ready for council to approve, so a decision and findings would be able to be entered at the next meeting, if that's the wish of council.
Okay, and I appreciate that clarity, I, I do recall in the past, um, some of these hearings where we've done that quite quickly.
嗯。
Um, in the meantime, is the operator or, or the license holder, are they allowed to continue to operate?
Yes, they, they still currently have a license, um, so, so yes, it, it's a little complicated because the, as, um, as was indicated today, the LLC, um, that has the license isn't registered, um, but technically, that, that business, um, is identified in the application. Um, but technically that, that business, um, as identified in the application, um, does have a license.
And is the respondent, um, as, as Attorney May has alluded to, right, that, that. They could come forward tomorrow and submit a new application if this one were revoked. Uh, but can they submit a new application if the revocation has not occurred?
Um. They would be able to amend their license, yes. Um, essentially if, if they are voluntarily giving back their license and putting in a new application for a new. Um, organization with, with all the, um, requirements that are necessary with the application, they could begin that process.
Okay. Thank you.
Alder.
I just was wondering, I'd like to go into closed session. So. I know we don't have the language for that, but that would like to, I'd like to make a motion to do that. To, to go into closed session. We can't because we don't have the, the wording that's.
Correct. Yes, it's, it's a notice issue, um, for open meetings. So because we don't have the language, we wouldn't be able to go into closed session.
Well then. I withdraw my motion.
Any other comments? I would entertain a motion. Alder Stevens? First council meeting in January.
Twenty first, yes.
So can we hold a special meeting before then? And that's something the council can do, yes. Or can we instruct them to amend?
That's, it, it's not an available, um. Remedy under the revocation, under the, the massage establishment ordinance, essentially a, a decision has to be made either to revoke. Or to not revoke. Um, it's up to the applicant if they want to come in and voluntarily terminate the current or amend to get into compliance. Um, but, um, as it stands, it's not something that amending and fixing. The issues that are outstanding is not something that's a, that's an available remedy, um, that can be directed.
And with that being said, could the applicant? Hand over their license and reapply immediately?
We would have to review the ordinance exactly how that would work, but I, I don't believe there's anything in the ordinance that would prevent that from happening.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Alder Weary and then Johnson.
With the proper motion, well, it could be any motion, we to, uh. Move ahead with revoking and to draw up the findings of fact.
If, if council can identify a reason, the basis, um, for the revocation, a motion can be made.
I would make that.
Tonight.
I mean, all the.
Alder Weary makes motion to revoke the license.
And then I will just use all the evidence presented by our attorney.
So the grounds that present, so basically the, so to reflect, to reiterate what the, what the record, um, has. Um, Attorney May stated that, um. The city is seeking revocation under, um. Let me just look for the citation. Under section ten dash nine five G one. Uh, Green Bay municipal code for making and recording false, fraudulent or intentionally deceptive statements in the application.
Yes, uh, you know, it's obvious to me. There's some subterfuge here. You know, the owner has no clue. Person that we issued the license to. Clues. And everything on theirs is inaccurate. Um, so. Pretty easy. They can deal with the future if they want, how they want to go about it in the future, but this has to end. Thanks. Pretty easy.
It's Alder, that was seconded by Alder Eck. Uh, discussion on that motion. Alder Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. So again, if we were to vote, just for clarification and make it extremely transparent, if we were to vote to revoke this tonight and it passed. The applicant could go to the clerk's office tomorrow. File a proper application with current information and accurate information. And it would go before protection policy and move forward as normal, correct?
Correct. Um, I think there, there could be a wait or a, a, a pause period, uh, because at the revocation point. Um, the, um, the individual would not, which I would, I would argue won't start until the findings of fact and conclusions of law are, are physically adopted. Um, but, um, there would be between the revocation point and when the new license would be issued, there could be no operation of business at that site. Without a valid license being in place. So there could be a little bit of time.
Okay. And what you were saying is if we didn't revoke it tonight. That would give the opportunity for the applicant to withdraw their license, amend it voluntarily. And that would not disrupt.
Right.
Their business.
It would be more of a situation of them surrendering their license and then they would still be in the same situation.
Okay.
Theoretically time wise.
Okay.
Because they would have to wait for a new committee and council, uh, committee and council meetings. To approve. Right. The new application.
So there really is no difference in the decision that we make, the processes ultimately the timeline is similar.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Other than not revoking and then the business obviously continues.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, comments on the motion Alder Eck? And then Alder Stevens.
There we go. Um, and based on what was presented, it, it seems very obvious to me that, um, there was an intention of, um, of deception. Um, the, the, the person who is on the license or supposedly on the license, as Alder Weary said. Does not seem to understand the process and, and, um, that I, it, it just seems as if. She's just the, I guess you could say front person. Um, because of the record of the other individual. So I just, I think that we, we should revoke this license.
Any other comments on that motion? Uh, Alder Stevens, no, Alder Johnson.
Just to clarify Attorney Bunker, um. Unlike liquor licenses that have a provisional license option. Uh, there is not that opportunity for this license. Is that correct?
Correct. There's no provisional license application or, uh, provision or allowance.
Okay. Uh, so again, recognizing that if we proceed with findings of fact and conclusion, that would come back on January twenty first. Uh, the license holder would by law be allowed to continue to operate unless they chose to surrender and reapply. If they reapply. They still have to go through the traditional process of P and P and then ultimately. Common counsel, uh, for approval, but I, I, you know, I support the motion. It's, uh. I don't even think you have to talk about intent. There are just so many errors here. That this is unfortunately the obligation. Um, that, that we have because it's an LLC that doesn't exist. There's a whole lot of other things going on and I think the appropriate course of action here. Is to revoke it because, uh, of all of those errors. And then if the applicants, uh, in the room, you know, so. Future applicants, I guess, so choose to apply for licenses and get all the information correct with the interpreter's. Uh, support as, as, uh, both of them had alluded to. And then, you know, then it at least gives us the opportunity to write information to put them through those proper background checks. And, uh, you know, appropriate review and, um, by the protection policy committee and subsequently counsel. I just. I don't see another path here with so much incorrect information.
Other, Alder Profit.
If the applicant were to come into, sorry Clerk Jeffrey, used to put you on the spot, um. But were to follow through as we were saying, is translation service available within your office to assist with this application?
Mike, you're good. Oh, down there. Right. Cause I haven't used it, the new one. Um, so. You know, and, uh, without an appointment. It would be difficult for me to, uh, secure an interpreter. Um, translation services are available through the ARPA grant, but the translations for documents. So I would need an appointment to secure an interpreter. Uh, so that person can come in and understand the procedures in the office and what's expected of them.
Thank you.
Alder Morgan.
I believe Attorney May's has done a good job presenting. The evidence, which technically we have an illegal license issued that was done fraudulently. There's. The LLC used does not exist. And I can't see where we could vote anything other than revoking this.
Anything else? You have a motion and a second? All in favor will signify by saying aye. Pos nay? You guys have it, then that motion succeeds. So now we are. On to. Additions and communications, uh, to refer to finance committee to explore feasibility of an additional line on the printed city tax bill for this GB APS district. To distinguish the voucher dollars over which they have no financial oversight. Uh, Alder Profit makes a motion to approve, seconded by Alder Galvin. Any discussion on that? Alder Grant. Alder Grant.
Sorry. Oh, there we go. Thank you. I just wanted to say for the record that this agenda item did not come before me as chair of the finance committee. And for the public Attorney Bunker, can you just briefly summarize, this is a new policy, the two ways that alders can submit communications. And petitions and how this came through, please?
So. My green, yes. Um. Let me just look up my notes. I'm being consistent.
Did say briefly.
Well, I'll try and be brief with what I had sent, um. To the alders this afternoon. Um, so, uh, essentially there are two methods, um, or two pathways. Um, through which, uh, communications can be, um, referred. To committee and then to get to council. Um, the first method is through, uh, common counsel referral. So, uh, council members or alders can submit a petition, uh, petition communication. Uh, or an item of business that they wish council to take up. Through the, um, electronic portal and then that get, that goes to the clerk. For inclusion on the common council agenda. It's in printed listed, um, notice for the public. Um, it then is taken up by the entire body, um, via vote, uh, via majority vote to decide whether that item should actually be referred to a committee. And you can actually have discussion, um, as, as to whether it should be referred or not. Previously. Um, we had a process where essentially alders at the end of the meeting could announce a petition and communication and it was just kind of an automatic referral vote. Um, which. Didn't necessarily comply with open meetings law because you were introducing a matter of business, but it wasn't noticed on the agenda. Um, and because it wasn't noticed on the agenda, you couldn't really discuss it either. Um, so this gives you a little bit more, um. Driving authority, um, so to speak, because you have the ability to decide whether something should be referred to committee. Or whether you're not interested in pursuing something like that on behalf of the city. Um, so you have a little bit more control over the, the business that comes before you as a whole body. Um, the other method is through consent of the chair. So, um. You, an alder has the ability to again submit a petition, communication or item through the portal. It then gets routed to the appropriate staff and the clerk, um, not the number of other, uh, staff and, um. Should be also routed then to the chair of that particular committee for consent. For inclusion on the next agenda. Um, and so then the committee takes it up for full discussion, recommendation or referral to council and then council, um, takes action on it. Um, so either way is valid, um. It's up to the alder and their discretion, which way they want to proceed by getting their, their item introduced and, and, and in front of council. Um, and in this situation, um, Alder Profit did submit it for it to go straight to committee. We had a snap whoop becau- again, new process, um, and she had designated it to go to P and P. Um, law department and, and I, um, designated that it should be going to go into finance because it has a budget impact or could potentially have a budgetary impact. Um, and then it, it didn't get routed appropriately to the chair of the finance committee, Alder Grant, um, for her to review and provide consent. Um, and so accordingly, then I advised Alder Profit that she had this other available option of presenting it to. Um, council under this agenda item for referral vote this evening. Um, and to note, yes, um, alder, um, the sponsoring alder, the introducing alder. Name should be listed on the communication. There was also an oversight. So that will be included in the future. Um, and then additionally, alders can add their names, um, as additional cosponsors if it is a piece of legislation or item that they. Support, um, they can also request to have their names added, um, to that, um, to that piece of legislation, which will be, um. Uh, included as part of the general ordinance draft, um, if it is calling for an ordinance change. As brief as I can be.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Yes.
I appreciate that. So yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. Um, so this agenda item came to us a year ago. It was a full year ago.
Correct.
Okay.
There is a, uh, just another clarification, um. Pursuant to Roberts rules, a piece of, an item of business, if it's, um. Uh, received and placed on file by one, in one legislative session, it can't be brought up in that same legislative session. We deem legislative sessions as being a term of counsel. So it did get brought up last year, but it's allowed to be brought up again in this new legislative session that started in April. April twenty twenty four.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so like I said, this agenda item came to us a year ago and my feelings haven't changed. Um. This, I, while I understand this is. Being referred to committee. At the end of the day, it would take staff's time if we have questions. It was discussed a year ago that potentially adding this to the tax rule or document. Could cost us money. We just increased taxes on people. Staff's time is money. Um, this really is a small portion of the district's budget to itemize it might as, and they also have different avenues of disclosing this information. Um, I personally, this is a. This is a school district issue. We are city council. I believe we should remain in our own lane for lack of better words and I. I just don't see any benefit in revisiting this. Thank you.
Alder, Alder Profit.
Unfortunately, I know this has become quite the politicized issue and that is never my intent, um, with any topics that come before this body because I am not a political person by any means. Um, I feel like I was elected to this chair to represent my neighbors and that's what this communication stems from. So while I respect that it's been discussed, um, we do have a new body including four new alders and. This is something that I've heard repeatedly from the community. And I feel like it's important to refer to committee to show a collaborative nature with one of the other taxing entities on said bill. And we are the entity that gets to choose what goes on there as we send them out to our residents. So I think it's important to show collaborative nature. To our neighbors and those who we are here to represent. And that is why I brought it forward again, because I've been repeatedly asked about it by, um, those who are being taxed, um, by the school district and. By any of the other entities. So I, I feel it's important just to show collaboration with those interested parties. So that's why I support and brought forward this referral.
Alder Galvin. Unreferral. If I understood the, uh, email that we received from Attorney Bunker, we're not to discuss the merits plus or minus of this. At this time, we're supposed to discuss whether we feel it ought to go forward and. I feel it ought to go forward just because of transparency. The committee can discuss it. Uh, you don't know what there might be new information out there, new opinions. We have four new members. Um, and I'm willing to listen. And so I feel just for that purpose alone of transparency and for a discussion for our community that they should go forward. Thank you. Alder. A bunch of people, Alder Weary, then Ack, then Presley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for the attorney. Maybe Attorney May is going to handle it too. See. What's the process if a citizen submits the same request? As they can. They can put forward requests by whomever.
A, a request to the district or?
Uh, no, a request to be on an agenda. Say a citizen just submitted it, not an alder.
For, for a communication?
Yeah. We've had people, you know, right?
Right. Citizens, citizens should be, if, if a citizen, um, wishes something to be introduced or taken up. Um, it should be directed to, to either their alder, any alder. And then the alder is the, the vehicle by which items and businesses brought before.
Perfect. Okay. Now we're all duly elected, right? You know, we each represent twelve of the city. This, this could be, be very careful. This could be a tyranny of the majority. If you have six in the mayor, whoever the mayor is. And, and the, the head of that committee. You could block someone out. You could block out a whole slew of people and anything they want to talk about. I, I don't know why this has changed. I think I'm going to vote to have this go forward. I think all of us deserve the right to have what we want on an agenda. But I want us to be very careful. Let things go forward. If one of your fellow people want it on, they have that right. I, I don't want us to. Get into this where like your idea is great, your idea is horrible before we even discuss it. Um. So I just. Who knows along, along I'll be around, but for future. Let's let these go through and I, I, you know, I do. let's let these go through, and I, you know, I don't, sorry if I didn't read your email completely enough, but is there backing from like the League of Municipalities on this, that our requests can be blocked? Let's say, you know, you really think, and if citizens, you're just like, really think something's important to get on an agenda, but boy, majority of the council won't let it go, and we can't even talk about it. That seems so undemocratic. Unbelievable.
Counsel polices itself, so it's really up to the will. Alder's, Alder's authority is in the collective, so in the entirety of the body. So if the entirety of the body can't agree on dedicating resources or pursuing changes or adopting an ordinance, and not the entirety, it's not a unanimous decision, but the majority of the body, that is the representative, that's democratic representation.
Has it always been that way, and maybe we've just never talked about it like this?
That's what I was, I wanted to rephrase a little bit and just make the point, but as to question of Attorney Bunker, my understanding is, this, the council had this authority, it just wasn't made as explicitly clear.
And I think that's where, okay, and that's why the rub is.
There wasn't notice necessarily, this was an item that somebody wanted to bring forward. But under the old rules, council would have been able to say, no. Because you always voted, right, to refer everything, so you have the ability to not refer.
So under that, then I just would hope we respect each other from now till infinity, that if it's important to you and your district, get it on a committee, and that's where we can hash it out, whatever it is. Thanks.
Appreciate that. We had Alder Eck, and then Presley.
Okay, yeah, and I do find it, it is unfortunate that it is coming through this, this way. That I agree, that it'd be nice to go through the committee, get vetted, and then come to the full council. And, you know, again, I was part of the body that voted on it last time, but I will reserve my comments for when it comes back to the full council again.
I was not on the body the last time, so I'd like a chance to vote.
Thank you. Is it Alder Galvin?
This is for Attorney Bunker. When are they going to start notifying the chairs? Because I haven't been notified about any proposals.
Sure. I don't think we've had a lot of petitions and communications submitted.
Not, I mean.
Not as of late.
Yeah, we try to keep personnel pretty clean.
So I'll defer to Clerk Jeffries as to what has been coming in, so.
Right. So quite a busy year for everybody. And so the way that it works is that the communication comes in, you send it to me. Usually, before this process, when it appeared on the agenda, you would send it to me after the council meeting, then I would retain it. That retention in that e-file actually goes to the Law Department, so they can track it. Then I send it to, if it's for protection and policy, that's in my office. If it's for personnel, that goes to Joe, and then I leave it up to Joe, then to send it to the Chair. From, in my office, protection and policy, I send it directly to Alder Stevens, and then also to Lacy Cochard. So that's how the process works when it does not appear on the council agenda.
Alder Profit.
I just have one more comment too, for full transparency. I did submit it over two, two finance committee meetings ago. In my discussions with city staff, it does feel like we need to get some kind of answer to the county by March. We don't meet as a body again here until end of January. We're just talking about pushing the date out, so when this was presented to me as an option, I did contemplate for a day, like, do I just resubmit it so that it goes through the proper channels? But this, the way it was presented, it seemed like this was the best way forward, given that we have that timetable to talk to the county about any potential changes. So just for full transparency, I do believe it was just administrative oversight, no fault of anyone in particular, but just want to provide my rationale for why I went with this route.
Alder Johnson.
And I, I agree with Alder Weary, I don't ever want to sort of squash conversation around any particular topic, and while this particular item, I think, is much more transparent than perhaps others we might receive. You know, one of the things I mentioned to the mayor yesterday is, I just don't want us to get into a debate about an item for which we don't know the details, right? And I think we've done a good job here not, not doing that. We're talking about the process more than anything. You know, this isn't committing staff to do anything right now, right? This is just sending it to committee, and then at that time, after committee talks about it, we don't want staff to work on it, that, you know, that would happen at that, that meeting. One of the things, though, just to kind of highlight what Alder Weary is saying, you know, I can't help but wonder the merits, and Attorney Bunker, if you don't have an answer on this right now, that's fine, and I don't want to be too far off agenda topic. You know, I can't help but wonder if this should almost be like adjournment, where it's not even a debatable motion.
As it stands right now, it needs to be referred, right?
Right, but I mean, like, right now, we're debating it, right? I'd almost rather that you're not even allowed to debate it, it's a yes or no, right? Vote, just like adjournment, and because again, otherwise I fear you get into this where you start debating a policy that you don't even have in front of you. You don't have any details, you don't know anything about it. So, I don't know, that doesn't need to be addressed right now, but it's, I do support the referral because I, I just think it's an important part of our governance process.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor of referral, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and that item is referred, adjourned? Motion to adjourn made by Alder Profit, seconded by Alder Stevens, all in favor, say aye? Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, we're adjourned.